Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the City of Casa Grande on June 3rd, 2024. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first order of business tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Tonight, Pastor Anthony Edwards will be leading us in our invocation, and please remain standing because he's going to lead us in the pledge as well.
Father God, we come to you, Lord, we want to thank you, Lord, for blessing us to be able to assemble here together as a city, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for all of our city leaders, our council father, our mayor. We just thank you, and we just ask, Father, that you lead us in wisdom and knowledge, that, Father God, that we would carry business in the right manner, and that we'd be guided by you. So we thank you, and we praise you for all the things you've already done in our lives, all the things you're going to do, and the things that you're doing right now that we don't see nor do we realize and recognize that it is you. So we give you all glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, let the roll call show. I believe all members are present. Jeff, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
All right, all members are present. And we'll move to item C1, minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes of May 20th, 2024.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 20, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims against the city, item D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims date in May 15 through May 28, 2024, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Motion, pass. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes, Mr. Rains?
Mr. Mayor, we have no changes this evening.
Anyone from council?
None.
Okay. I see no changes, and we don't really, we don't have an exec session, right? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we do have some special presentations tonight. Gloria, you have your hands full tonight. We were swearing in of our new firefighters, Liam Stilson, Logan Brower, Seth Dab, Andrew Griffin, Jordan Meeks, Brendan Knoll, Michael Palma, and I'm going to butcher this, Hameen or Jamin or Jammin? How do you say it?
Jamin.
Jamin, all right. Thanks, sorry, Jamin. Jamin West. Congratulations to all of you. Well, you're not sworn in yet, so not yet.
If I can have you please raise your right hand. Okay. I state your name.
I, Brendan Knoll.
I, Michael Palma.
I, Andrew Griffin.
I, Jordan.
I, Brendan.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the State of Arizona.
And the laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear to faith.
That I will bear to faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend him against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of firefighter.
Of firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
All right, now that's a class.
That's the biggest class I've ever seen.
I think it is. It's got a rival, for sure.
I don't know, did they get pictures?
Casa Grande Fire Department just got a little bigger.
That's right.
We need all those guys to fill that 503? Or maybe some more? All right. All right, next item is item G, which is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? In council? Anyone from the public? Staff? Anything? All right, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Counselor Member Lavender.
Yep.
Counselor Member Huddleston.
Yes.
Counselor Member McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Member Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Counselor Member Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item H, which is our public comments section. This is where we will open the floor to any public comment. Just as a reminder, if you're here to speak about some of the public hearings that will be addressed later, I would recommend you speak then instead of speak now during the public comments section, because you will have an opportunity to speak during the time when the actual item is on the agenda and which then can actually be discussed, because it is an agendized item. And then remind anybody who does want to speak now on some other topic, you're certainly welcome to come up, but realize it is not on the agenda, therefore we cannot discuss it. And I would ask that you state your name and your address for our records, and if there's anyone who would like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Yes, sir. And please try and keep your comments to three minutes. We do have a timer on it, so it kind of gets obnoxious when it goes off.
Hello, Mayor, members of council. My name is Charles Cork. I live at 116 East Data Avenue, and I'm hoping to be sitting in one of those chairs after the election. Well, I came here to ask you all tonight, is I said there are several issues that we're going to be discussing about zoning changes and land use. I would understand, from my point of view, that when you are elected to a public office, you're basically hired by the people of the city to take care of them. And when we think about changing land use for people, you should very heavily weigh the opinions of the people that are going to have to look at it, drive through it, and deal with it on a daily basis. It's not what they've moved in by, and their vote should, their voice should be much louder than that of, say, a developer who just wants to come in and make some money. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. I did have some speaking pieces here, so I mean, Nancy, did you want to wait, or would you like to come now? Okay.
This is kind of a general item, so.
Okay.
Nancy Wood, 513 Speckle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And I came in tonight because I wanted to thank the Arizona Water Company and the City of Casa Grande for helping out with the boroughs during the Vista High School graduation, because the burrowing owls were impacted by the large number of graduates we had, and I wanted to congratulate all our high school graduates from Vista High School and hope them a wonderful future as they endeavor in their new things. And just wanted to thank that it was a large gathering, and our city is growing, and there, you know, there was a lot of traffic and things like that, so it was difficult to kind of navigate around the area as our city grows. Our population has increased and such like that, so the wildlife there that we've had, because we were a farming community, the burrowing owls have been impacted a lot, and we actually saved three families, four families of owls, which, you know, is a couple owls per borough and a bunch of little outlets now that are going to be able to survive. And I'm sorry that, you know, for the inconvenience that night, you know, of having to kind of take care of and keep them. So thank you for the Arizona Water Company, because they went over and above with helping out, that I couldn't have done it by myself, and the city, and everybody that helped out, and the, congratulations to the high school graduates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did have another one here. Shannon, do you want to speak now, or were you here for a topic?
I would prefer to go to the topics part.
Okay. All right, anyone else? A general topic? Not on the agenda? All right, we'll close the public comments section then, and we'll move on to our award of contracts and consider approval of ordinance number 3421.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, Mayor Pro Tim Edwards, and members of the council. This is to consider a contract with Artistic Land Management for the maintenance of parks, facilities, medians, and right of ways within the city. They are a current contractor now. The city has contracted parks and facilities for many years. They will be taking care of 43 areas, 54 acres of mowing, and 106 acres of landscaping. It is also a considerable savings to the city. Over the past year, we have implemented standards and specifications for all areas, including our own park systems that we're responsible for, and evaluations conducted to determine how many staff it would take, and it would take about eight staff to do what they do. We would also have to purchase pesticides, pre-emergent vehicles, equipment, and uniforms as well, which is included of what their fees are. We advertised this request for proposals in the spring of 2024, and out of the two, we actually received only two proposals for this, and we recommend artistic land management for the most responsive company. They are well established throughout other cities, throughout the East Valley, and they have been very responsive to us when we do have issues. They did have some issues over the past few years, specifically with some retention areas and some medians. They did have staffing issues. They also had issues with the same things we have, the stink net issues, the invasive plants that have been throughout the county, but we are going to be implementing a better quality control system and measurements for ourselves. It's going to be a little bit easier for us to implement, since we do have our standards and specifications now of what our staff are responsible for with what they do. We are recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter in a three-year contract with Artistic Land Management, or ALM, for the total price of $307,000 and $552 a year. Are there any questions?
Donna?
I just want to make sure I get this. I know that we were talking about prioritizing about some of our right of ways, and, you know, we're asking people to clean up their blithe, and so how are we going to prioritize with them so that we do a better job?
Right, so part of our quality control we're going to be implementing is before, we're actually going to be sitting down with again before this new contract store, we're basically going to give them a start over with their company, with their owner, who generally when we call, it's actually the owner we speak to, which that's why they're so responsive. Some of their quality control is part of the issue, and a lot of the times they were, we were having to do that quality control. We're going to ensure that they're doing their own quality control, and we're actually going to be involving our senior maintenance staff. Have you seen them driving a lot a bit more? Our senior maintenance staff have skill sets that they need to go to different parks. We're actually going to be giving them the quality control aspect of those particular medians. So let's, a particular senior maintenance staff will be responsible for certain mediums and retention bases as part of their routes. As we see, we, I guess I didn't explain that they do, will be providing a monthly report from ALM, they are required to do that. We will be giving those reports to our senior maintenance staff to make sure that they're driving around and making sure that those quality control is actually taken care of, not just telling us that they've done it, but they're actually making sure they've done it. So those are some of the things that were prioritized over this next year.
And I know our staff do a great job, and I know that, you know, that there's been issues of recent all over the city, so we just want to be good stewards of our own land.
Yeah, and we're trying to do the best on our end, too, to make sure we do that quality control.
If we're being critical of somebody, we need to be critical of ourselves.
Correct. I agree.
Lisa?
And you know, Mayor, I know many of our residents use the See, Click, Fix app, so how does that information get to you when it is city property?
It comes directly to our maintenance staff, generally our leads, park superintendents, crew leads, because then we can dispense some of the areas that are area, and some of the areas that we get aren't necessarily the responsibility of the city, it just really depends. We do have a lot of areas, because we do take care of all the medians, the irrigations throughout the city. We still take care of all those areas, the irrigation, et cetera.
Okay, so you encourage people to continue to use that app?
Yes.
And the information goes directly to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And if it's not our area, you forward it to?
The appropriate area, yes.
Okay.
I was going to say that, but since we have a good crowd tonight, everyone download the See, Click, Fix app, and you can report any issues, and we will help handle them with any department, too, so. It's a good tool to have, I use it all the time myself.
Graffiti, trash, weeds, all that fun stuff. Anybody else? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, there we go. So all right, we're going to consider ordinance number, please, Gloria? I went past it too far.
Ordinance number 3421. In ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Artistic Land Management, Inc., to provide maintenance services for certain city parks, facilities, medians, and right of ways, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract with Artistic Land Management, Inc. Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 3421 as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Member Lavender.
Yep.
Counselor Member Huddleston.
Yes.
Counselor Member McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Member Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Counselor Member Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item J. This is our boards, this is our boards and commissions. We have some new appointments. Are the, is the youth commission here?
No, they are not, but.
Okay.
There's a reason.
Okay.
But they're all going to be appointed tonight, hopefully.
Okay.
And we will meet them.
Are you going to present them, or is someone here to present the candidates?
Just me.
Just you, all right. Match your up, then.
All right. Mayor McFarland, I'm pleased to announce that we had about 30 applications for 15, I'm sorry, 16 positions on the youth commission. We got eight people, and every year the youth commission members that are current have to reapply, and sometimes they don't make it back on, and these are voted on by the youth commission with their membership for their membership. So it's a very, very rigorous process, and they know what they're looking for, and so if these kids don't give their all, they're going to know it. So I'm pleased to say that our reappointments, Anthony Amato, L. Wiles, Emma Anila, Kiara De La Cruz, Mila Lopez, Peyton Salazar, Reese Maestis, and Sawyer Barth will be appointed to return, and new members coming in this year, Corinne Jacobson, Gunner Barth, Isabella Mejia, Kendra Wilson, McKinley Carrier, Piper O'Sullivan, Quinn Wong, and Sarah Olson. And we have the mix from different high schools, different grades, everything, so it's going to be a great year for them, and we are kicking off at the end of July with our annual retreat. So with great pleasure, Mayor McFarland, I would like to recommend approval of these 16 members to the Casa Grande Youth Commission.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, well, congratulations to the newest members and/or the returning members of the youth commission. All right, next item is J2. This is to consider approval and appointment of Garrett Aldred, Ald...
Dredy.
Dredy, thank you. And Mark Bonzel to the Historic Preservation Commission. Are either of them here? Let's see, Mark here. All right, well, first of all, and also to the youth commission, thank you for volunteering, but also to these newest members to our Historic Preservation Commission, thank you for your volunteerism. This is not a paid position, they take time out of their, out of their life to participate, and so we greatly appreciate it. It's important, these commissions are important to the City of Casa Grande, as they are the eyes and ears for our, for the board, for us, for us council members, actually. So, all right, any comments or questions about the members? All right, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the two new members.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, congratulations to Garrett and to Mark. Next is item K. This is ordinance resolutions and matters subject to requiring action by the council. This is considering the final approval of ordinance number 1178.450.
Mr. Mayor, this appears for a second reading, and it was not on the consent agenda, because we did have a member who did not vote in favor of it, so we just need to go ahead and do the reading.
Okay.
Okay. In ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from general business and multifamily residential to planned area development on property located generally 530 feet west of Arizona Road on the south side of Early Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1178.450 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Counselor Member Lavender.
No.
Counselor Member Huddleston.
Yes.
Counselor Member McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Member Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Counselor Member Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, move to item L. These are our public hearings, public meetings. First item is item L1, which is public hearing, consider the approval of ordinance number Now it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This evening, we're going to consider a zone change request for the Olas Senior Village. The specific zone change request is from urban ranch to planned area development to accommodate a multifamily, excuse me, senior living facility. The site is approximately five acres, it's located at 340 Potabom Avenue, approximately a quarter mile south of Florence. The proposal is for 64 dwelling units with a density of 13 dwelling units per acre. The buildings would be two-story buildings with a 30-foot max height, and you can see the site on the screen. Might note that surrounding the site to the north are some apartments, to the east are apartments, to the south is a single-family neighborhood, the South Fork neighborhood, and then to the west across Potabom is some low-density residential urban ranch zone development. This item was considered by the planning commission on February 1st of this year, and at that time, the proposal was for a three-story multifamily buildings with a max height of 30 feet. It was 75 dwelling units with a density of 16 DU's per acre. The south sets, excuse me, the south setback adjacent to the South Fork development was 50 feet, and the planning commission recommended denial of the zone change on a 5-2 vote. So the plan before you is the plan that the planning commission recommended denial of. So this item comes before you tonight at the request of the applicant for an administrative review of the planning commission's decision on the zone change. Those graphics on the right side of the screen reflect the project as considered by the planning commission. I might note that the, subsequent to the planning commission meeting, the applicant went back to the drawing board, if you will, had some additional meetings with the neighbors, listened to their concerns that were both expressed at the planning commission, and subsequent to that, and revised the proposal to address the concerns that they had heard. Those changes were to reduce the building height from three-story down to two-story and down to a max height of 30 feet, to decrease the number of dwelling units from 75 to 64, thereby reducing the deep, the density to 13 dwelling units per acre, and increasing the south setback adjacent to the South Fork development from 50 feet to 85 feet. So these photos are of the project as currently proposed by the applicant. This is the site plan that is currently proposed by the applicant. You are not considering the site plan this evening. If the PAD happens to be approved, then the applicant will pursue a major site plan approval by the planning commission with a new public hearing for that major site plan. In considering zone changes or PADs, there are a number of review criteria that are set forth in the code that staff is required to evaluate the proposal against. Those are all the bullets on your screen. Staff has evaluated the conformance of the project for all of those, and that's set forth in your staff report that was attached to the RCA. Just want to talk briefly about the two that are highlighted in blue. The first review criteria, which is in a relationship with the plant elements to conditions both on and off the property, really just sort of speaks to compatibility and how this project fits into the context of the surrounding land uses. As I mentioned, we do have multifamily to the north and to the east at a higher density than this project. We have single-family R1 development at about probably four DU's per acre to the south for the South Fork, and then across the road, we have very low-density urban ranch development on the west side of Potabom. The project has been designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses, specifically pushing the buildings further to the north away from the South Fork project, and decreasing the building height and decreasing the overall density of the development. The other review criteria that I'd like to talk about briefly is conformance with the general plan, and one of the things we look at is the general plan land use category, in this case, which happens to be neighborhoods. Neighborhoods, although it's primarily a single-family land use category, about 70% is single-family development, it does allow for both medium and high-density developments. And so this particular project complies with the allowable medium-density development within the half-mile of the project site. So it does comply with the neighborhood's land use category. It also does have direct access to a collector's street, which happens to be Potabom. street, which happens to be Potabom. Another thing that the general plan is, looks to is providing alternative housing choices for various groups in our community, and we try to encourage a variety in neighborhood design, and we try to provide a variety of housing choices for all income levels, generations, and household demographics, including encouraging a range of residential development types, densities, and building designs by use of our PAD zone district. In this case, the demographic that's being proposed to be served with this multifamily development are seniors, 55-plus, which is, we've identified as an underserved demographic within our community. That sort of speaks to this portion of the general plan, that the zoning is necessary and proper to meet the land use needs of the residents, and as I mentioned, it meets by providing additional housing for our senior population, and it's an infill development. This is a summary of the public hearing notification efforts, both prior to the Planning Commission and subsequent to this meeting. During the Planning Commission hearings, we had received a couple emails in opposition prior to the hearing, but we did have a number of public speak in opposition during the public hearing that the Planning Commission held on this item, and subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting, we received additional email of opposition, and actually, an additional email of support was received and attached to your So I mentioned the, at the February 1st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the staff recommended to the Planning Commission that we, that this rezoning be approved. Planning Commission on a 5-2 vote disagreed and forwarded a, made a decision, actually, to deny the rezoning. The rezoning was requested for an appeal or an administrative review by the applicant, which brings us to this evening's hearing. Council's choices would be to approve the zone change, deny the zone change, or table the matter for further review for up to two meetings. Should council approve the zone change, staff recommends we have two conditions of approval, which one is that the amenities that are being provided in the project, which happen to be pickleball courts and a pool in the community center, are restricted to the use of the residents and guests only, and not open to the general public, and then our standard right-of-way dedication condition is number two. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have as staff, but I would like to note that the applicant has a, and the applicant's team is here, and they would like to make a short presentation as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of Paul?
No.
All right. If the applicant is here and would like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Please give us your name and address for our records, please.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the council. My name is John Gillespie. I'm an attorney with the law firm Rosloff Group, 7144 East Stetson Drive in Scottsdale, Arizona. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Tonight, I have Paul Basha, who is with Summit Land Engineering. He's a professional traffic engineer, and he, I'll give him some time tonight as well, if that's okay, to, to address some issues that were raised in the process, and then as well, truly an honor to have Joseph and Florence Oladukun being represented on this project. They are the property owners. Joseph and Florence, Florence is with us here tonight. They came here to America 35 years ago. Joseph was trained as a pharmacist, Florence, a nurse practitioner. Their passion is, is medical and healthcare delivery. They moved here to Casa Grande, and they raised their three girls here in town, and they live, they live at the site. They, this is a passion project for them, and I'm really honored to be able to, to represent them, to discuss not only what their vision is, but also how they've worked with the neighbors to try and, and mitigate concerns that have been raised. I know there are a lot of neighbors here tonight, so I want to try to make it through a little bit quicker and reserve some time to discuss any comments that might be, might be raised. Paul did a great job introducing our site and, and a lot of considerations here. So as you know, there's, there's multifamily, existing multifamily to the north and to the east of us. The South Fork residence property is in south of us, and there is currently larger lot properties to the east, or to the west. Zoom in on the site here. Currently five acres. When the South Fork property was developed, that led to a little bit of the irregular placement of our home on the site. That home's proposed to remain and be brought in under the PAD to work as a community operations, and, and some of our amenities are associated with it. Here's a blowout of the zoning here. I think this is an important slide to kind of consider. As you can see, Potabom is west of our site. East of Potabom is where we have PAD rezonings that have occurred, current development that's occurred over the decades, and to the north is the Florence Boulevard corridor, which we sit outside of and near too. To our west is urban ranch, and development has not occurred as much, and it is a lower residence area over there, and I'd like to make that distinction, and I'll come back to it a little bit, of kind of how urban ranch is used as a zoning district here in the city. So to speak specifically about, about our project, it's a gated community. It's a senior independent living facility. So the Oladukuns, in their, they're working here in Casa Grande, they've realized that seniors want to have a certain level of independence. They don't want to be in a congregate living facility, but they also want to be able to have amenities that are, elevate their lifestyle and keep them, keep them young, keep them active, keep them able to, being contributing members here in society, and so a lot of what the Oladukuns have put together here really have that in mind. So there is a 24-on-call medical provider. That means that if they're, you know, many of our residents, we, 55-plus is what's mentioned, we're really thinking this is more of a 70-plus type community. This is, this is not persons who need to live in congregate facilities. It's persons that, that still, maybe they have a disability of some sort that limits or impairs their abilities, but they're still active, they're still young enough to, to be able to enjoy these amenities. But the peace of mind to know that there's an on-call medical provider is a key aspect. These coming, coming up in a kind of a weird, weird fashion here. I didn't realize that. So the, the community pool, the community center, I'm going to just click through all of them just so that we can have them all up and don't get it in a weird order there. Some of the other aspects, it's, the residents, they're not working anymore, but they'd like to have the ability to get out and to visit Casa Grande, but that's done with shuttle transportation services. So that's a coordinated effort that minimizes the impact on, on traffic and meets the needs of the residents. Community pool, community center, the community center has a reading room, a library, painting room, dance floor, scheduled activities, really well-thought-out program activity that makes this an elevated community that attracts individuals to, to Casa Grande and meets as well the need to keep some of these individuals who are the hallmarks of our community. Unique community garden, animal amenity, walking paths. This is a nice area, a nice proposal that really elevates the standard of living for these, these residents, and is a unique, unique offering in our town, in our city that, that doesn't really exist as, as staff has, has mentioned. There's a need for, for this type of development, and, and that's what's being sought to be delivered here. To talk about our, our timeline, because this has been a, a process, a long-going project. We went to, through a neighborhood meeting. We didn't have a huge attendance at our neighborhood meeting, the initial neighborhood meeting. At the Planning Commission, a lot of neighbors attended and voiced concerns with the projects. These are the main things that we, we heard from the Planning Commission and from neighbors at that, at that meeting. There's a concession that senior housing is needed, but that not at this location. They wanted step backs to our three-story proposal, and there was insufficient building setbacks to transition to the single family. So we went, we went to the drawing board, we went back with the neighbors, we opened a dialogue. We wanted to have a discussion with neighbors about what were key concerns, and these are the things that we heard. The existing traffic on Potabom is, is a concern for residents. It's an existing condition that, that they are not satisfied with. There's an expectation of decrease in property values. There's a privacy, there was a privacy concern with those three-story buildings. Similarly, needed, they know that senior housing is needed, but is there another location that it would be better? And then the, the thought of wanting to preserve the urban ranch zoning. That's what we heard from neighbors. So we went back and we said, how, how can we address these concerns? And here's a summary of the changes, significant changes that were made by the Oladukuns as, as a concession and to really make this a better project for this, for the city. So taking all, all of the buildings from three-story, reduced down to two-story. So proposed at 35 feet, it's down to 30 feet. The views are protected with going to two-story. Southern two-story building setback was increased to 98 feet, almost 100 feet from that South Fork southern boundary. We increased that, that setback. In addition to increase in that setback, we increased the landscape in that setback. So 29 feet minimum of landscape, which would allow for two rows of trees with significant buffering to the south. The unit count was reduced as well, so reduced from 72 units to 64 units. So here's the revised plan that, that's, that's been put together. Continues to be a gated community. As you can see here, the buildings, the number of buildings remains the same. The buildings are oriented so as to not have as much of a visual impact to the south, so they're, they're oriented north to south. The community is, is a looped community. A lot of the amenities are on the west side of the building, west side of the project. That's where a single-story community center is located, and then, as had been mentioned, some of those garden and pool amenities are located next to the existing building that's on, on the site right now. We tried to move everything up to the north, towards the multifamily on the north and the east as, as possible. 98-foot minimum between the two-story building to the south property line. Here's a flavor of, of the really upscale architecture that's being proposed with this project. Christopher Steinle, who, who's here with us tonight as well, has done a great job putting together these, these renderings and these concepts. As you can see here, it's, it's an, an updated contemporary architecture, nice use of materials, really will be a benefit to, to elevate architecture in the area. This is a sightline exhibit that kind of shows if you're standing on the south side of this property, what are you going to see? And as you can see, the, the significant buffering with the trees provides a nice transition, and the, the building heights are not imposing on the south boundary. I'm going to turn a quick, Mayor McFarland, is this all right? I'll turn my, a quick time over to Paul Basha to, to talk about some of the existing conditions with the traffic, and then it's all right, I'll come, come right back up and conclude.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The slide you see before you, on the left is an aerial photograph of the site vicinity with the two east-west streets and five, sorry, five east-west streets and two north-south streets indicated. On the right are traffic counts that we provided, that were obtained on May 1st. It was a Thursday, and there's traffic counts, two locations on Potabom, three locations on Colorado. The numbers in black are the daily traffic volumes, and you can see that Potabom, south of Florence, has approximately 5,000 daily vehicles. Potabom, north of Florence, has approximately 3,000 vehicles. And then Colorado has approximately 6,000 daily vehicles south of Florence, 7,000 north of Florence, and 8,000 north of Ninth Street. Potabom has much less traffic than Colorado, and approximately 1,000 vehicles per day less south of Florence on Potabom compared to Colorado Street. And then in the purple numbers, those are the highest hourly volumes in the morning. The yellow numbers are the highest hourly volumes in the evening. So yes, Potabom does have some traffic, as was identified by Paul Ties. It is a collector's street, and it has collector volumes, but the volumes on Potabom are less than the volumes on Colorado. This next slide compares the traffic volumes generated by the proposed independent living homes, and that's 64 homes, to a possible 16-home subdivision, similar to the subdivision immediately south of this property. These traffic volumes are determined using a trip generation manual, which is used throughout the United States and has been used for over 50 years. We, as traffic engineers, collect data from similar types of land use throughout the United States and Canada, and then we use those traffic volumes to determine trip generation rates by dwelling unit, we call it, and that's where these numbers come from. And you can see by glancing at them quickly that they're virtually the same. The 64 independent living homes will generate essentially the same traffic volume as a 16-home subdivision, similar to the subdivision immediately south of this property. I suggest that you look at the numbers in green and blue and red. We analyzed the traffic volumes for three peak hours, and this slide will show you those projected traffic volumes for each of the three hours generated by the independent living facility. The numbers in green will be the morning peak hour, in blue will be midday peak hour, and red will be evening peak hour. These are the same numbers that were on the previous slide. The Olas Living Facility will generate a total of 13 vehicles in the morning peak hour. Four entering the facility, nine exiting the facility. Again, these are hourly numbers. The midday peak hour, 16 total vehicles, nine entering, seven exiting. Evening peak hour, 19 total, 10 entering, nine exiting. Those 13 vehicles, excuse me, in green, you see 13 vehicles total, four traveling south on Potabom, south of Florence, nine traveling north on Potabom, again, south of Florence. The numbers in blue are the midday peak hour, nine entering, seven exiting, total of 16, and then red are the peak hour volumes, 10 southbound, nine northbound. And then we also estimated the turning movements at the intersection of Florence and Potabom. Those nine vehicles coming from the south in the morning hour, four of them turn left, two go straight, three turn right, and then you can see entering, there's one vehicle an hour making an eastbound turn from Florence onto Potabom, one vehicle per hour going south on Potabom from north of Florence to south of Florence, and then two vehicles per hour from east of Potabom on Florence to make the left turn to go south. And then we have the same, similar numbers in blue, which are the midday peak hour, and then also in red, which is the evening peak hour. The Olas Living Facility will generate a maximum of four vehicles per hour making a turning movement at the intersection of Florence and Potabom. With that, back to John.
Thank you, Paul. In our outreach efforts, we, we talked with Mayor Walton. I appreciated some feedback that I bounced off of him related to this hypothetical South Fork II scenario, which would be a 16-home subdivision with the same development standards and lot sizes as the South Fork residents, many of who are, are here today. So developing this parcel hypothetically similar to, to South Fork, to, to just evaluate, what would the conditions be like if that type of a, a proposal was brought forth? Key aspects of that, one- and two-story buildings could be built. In South Fork, we have one- and two-story building heights, up to 28 feet. The 20-foot setback is the standard for South Fork residents from the back of their homes to the property line. 20 feet would be proposed in this hypothetical And then as, as Paul had, had introduced, the traffic impact is very comparable for 16-home subdivision, where individuals are going to work every day, they're going, they're taking people to school. That's why those That's why those numbers become comparable, because the Olah Senior Facility is individuals who are enjoying the amenities that are offered at their location. So just to compare some of these aspects here, the prior plan was 72 units. It showed 79 feet as being the closest that the buildings would be to the south property line, a three-story building, and it expected an average daily trip of 233 trips. The hypothetical South Fork II is a 20-foot building setback. Can be two-story buildings there, and it would generate a traffic of 187 daily trips. We bring in the Colony Apartments, which is to the east, as a comparison. That existing condition next to South Fork, there's a 25-foot setback to multiple homes in South Fork, to the Colony. And it's a two-story project. We didn't do a traffic analysis on that, although we do know that a lot of those trips from the Colony use Potabom. The revised plan takes the units down to 64. It increases the building setback to 98 feet. It caps the building height at two stories, and it keeps that average daily trip comparable to the 16-home hypothetical situation. So in conclusion, as staff had recommended, the general plan, the proposal is aligned with the general plan, given the existing land uses in the area with the percentage of multifamily that's in the area and what's being proposed. The location of the site, east of Potabom, next to the Florence Boulevard corridor, is an important consideration there as well. It meets the general plan goal to have a variety of housing choices for all income levels, generations, and household demographics. That's what the Olah-Dukens' passion is, is to provide senior living here in this facility, in this community. That's what makes this a unique site. They have the site, they have the development passion to bring this forward. They are going to live on-site. They're going to operate. This is their end goal, is to be here. And then just last, to point out, there's urban ranch, east of Potabom, there's urban ranch, west of Potabom. The east of Potabom, our urban ranch, fits under the city's intent here that this zone shall be applied to those city areas, which are not generally rural in character, but also those areas which may undergo more intensive development, in which case, the same zoning district shall be considered as a holding classification. We propose that this offering is that holding. Now is the time to approve this unique community asset. And with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
All right, go ahead. Does this property have a certificate of assured waters play?
Councilmember Herman, good question. It does not, and that's why that hypothetical scenario is for illustration purposes only.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Maybe after.
Okay.
After we open it.
Okay, thank you.
If I could reserve some time, I don't want to belabor, but I know we've got a lot of residents, and there might be some questions I might be able to answer after, so.
Yeah, if there's some questions, we can.
Thank you.
Call you back up to answer them.
Thank you.
Anything else, Paul? This is a public hearing, so this is item L1, and ordinance number 1178.451. And I did have, nope. Shannon, I have your card, but it's not for this subject. So was there anyone here that would like to speak on this subject? I would ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes, state your name and your address, and the floor is open.
Hi, I'm Jeff Keck. I live at 130 North South Fork Drive, basically directly across the wall, my wall, my backyard backs up to where the original residence is, and the swimming pool. And then recently, they've built a really large structure, just a few feet behind my wall, that houses a bunch of ostriches. The one, one of them's pretty loud. But that's, like, I'm seeing this stuff about 98 feet, and I'm kind of confused why they were just recently built a structure right next to my back wall, like, maybe eight feet away from my pool, or 10 feet away from my pool. In addition to that, you know, I think that we're, you know, they're trying to, you know, get something through here. Talking about the reduction in height, you know, it's a five-foot reduction from 35 feet to 30 feet. It's still a huge change, you know? And I've lived here for 10 years in this same house, and we talk about, you know, that it's a beautiful view from our second floor, that we like the urban ranch that's there. You know, my family refers to it as the arboretum. And I know they're talking about keeping some of this stuff for the residences, but then I'm wondering is, so is that going to be like the area where everyone goes to hang out, wherever the pool is back there, and where these ostriches are? So right on the other side of my fence, I feel like there's going to be just like a whole bunch of activities and, you know, people, over the last 10 years, there's been none of that. There's been, you know, maybe a family living back there, maybe even just like a single person. I hardly ever see anybody. So it's a huge impact on me and my house and my family to have it completely changed like that, to parking lots, pickleball courts. I think everybody knows pickleball courts are pretty loud. It's a really peaceful area back there behind the house. I do have concerns about my property value. I have some concerns about traffic, not too much. It's more about just the aesthetic and the way that this has been. Like I say, I've been there for 10 years, and other people have been there for longer. And it's just kind of a frustrating situation, so that's kind of where I'm at. I think a lot of the other neighbors feel the same way.
Well, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Russell Self. I live at 209 North Potabom Road. Two things I'd like you to take note of, the Colorado, the survey of the traffic, that's a dead-end road. So if they're taking the survey up at Planet Fitness and Joanne's, that may be your difference in having that high flow. Colorado dead ends. You are not going to get the through traffic. This statement was made about 55 and older, but no one's going to be driving or working. I see everybody in here working, probably over 55 here. And the planning and zoning for the urban ranch is low density. We just said they're trying to make this medium density, which, we're trying to cram a puzzle piece into a puzzle that doesn't belong to this puzzle. It's not a good fit for our community on this street. Somewhere else, there's plenty of land all over town already zoned for this, and that's where this should go and would go. The existing ones that are there is creating the traffic flow. We are, everybody's real worried about traffic flow, and all these people, most of them are probably going to be driving. It's not like they don't drive at 55, you stop driving. But yeah, it's low density, urban ranch, where it's to ensure the agriculture activities for indefinite period of time, is the, off the city website, for urban ranch. So I'd really like for you to deny this and keep it urban for us. And a lot of us, I'm five generations in Casa Grande, we have our animals and stuff, and that's why we moved over there. We don't need that there. There's another place for this somewhere else. Thank you for your time.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for hearing us out. You're our representatives. We come to you.
Can you give me, do a favor? State your name and address for us, for the records?
Josue Ibarra. I live at 140 North South Fork Drive, which is right in the middle of the area. One thing that nobody has mentioned is, all those homes, and there's nine homes, I believe, that are going to be affected, all this, all our living spaces are to the north side, and then the wall, and then the project they're going to build. Our Arcadia doors, our big windows, our kitchen, bedroom, master, everything is on the side of all these buildings they're going to build. This is going to invade our privacy very much. I can't imagine yet, if this would be built, how we're going to feel with this, with closed curtains all the time, or so or so, because even two stories, it's pretty high. I see trees that they're going to be around the fence, but I don't think there's trees that are that high. And also, Potabom, it's a very small road. I'm sure you've all been there. It's a narrow road. And all the houses they're building, south of South Fork Ranch, all those buildings out there, they're using that road a lot. And it's narrow, it's not like other streets. This street here is wider than Potabom. I've seen projects they're building, where they're building other apartments, and there's a street in between or something, and then the housing area. This here is behind our backyard. We have swimming pools there, we have our children, my daughter's 16, in the backyard. And you have these two-story buildings up right next to us. These homes were built for houses. I retired from the sheriff's office in 2003, and I bought this home. We were looking, me and my wife, for a nice, quiet home, nice, big home, and we found that one. Very quiet, very great, everything's great, until now, this nightmare is coming upon us. And it's affecting a lot of people, you know? Yes, it's a business for them, it's money for them, but it's ruining our lives. And we come to you. You're our representatives. We ask for your help, because we have nobody else to go to. You're our only hope. Many lives of those night houses will be affected if this goes through. We trust in you, that God will provide and give you the wisdom to make the right choice. I enjoyed, I haven't been here in many years, but I enjoyed how we started everything, you know? Praise to God and the pleasure of leisure. Great, you know, I love that. But please hear us out. As many families will be affected. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Roger Smith. I live at 160 North South Fork Drive. Once again, I live just to the south of this new community. I haven't been here near as long as these guys. I've only been here four going on five years, but, you know, I cherry picked this spot where I'm at. You know, I have one neighbor to the north, nice and quiet. I'm in the construction industry as an inspector. I gladly get up at 2:45 in the morning to be on the far side of Phoenix to work at 5:00, to not have to live in that madhouse, okay? And we talk about traffic and the everyday traffic. Well, first, we get to live through a year and a half to two years of changing our dust filters in our HVAC two, three times a week, trash, dust, dirt in our pool filters, the racket, the, you know, midnight concrete pours with trucks backing in, beep, 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 the pumps roaring. If we survive that, we get rewarded with our privacy, our peace, and our quiet gone. Please back us up here.
Hello. My name is Patricia Hernandez. I live at 180 North South Fork Drive. My house is backed up, literally what would be the area. You look over the fence, and it's, it would be literally in my backyard. We, my husband and I have lived here all of our lives. We have lived in that home, again, like my neighbor said, cherry picked it because of the area. It's quiet, it's peaceful, all the neighbors know each other, you know? This would be a nightmare for us in our backyard. We enjoy the peace and the quiet, and, again, construction, we understand that there's a need for this in our community, just not there. Take it somewhere else where it is already zoned for. That's all I have.
My name's Michael Stark. I live at 197 North Potabom. As many have said here, we chose urban ranch as a lifestyle. And coming in and crowding that goes against what we spend our hard-earned money for. That may sound selfish, but at the end of the day, why change an urban ranch zoning when there is available zoning within the community? This was simply motivated by money. I also question, I would like to know the means and methods from the traffic engineer of how you get 6,000 vehicles a day on a dead-end street? When Potabom goes through to Dome, and we service the new subdivision south of there, as well as, it's a shortcut for some people for Walmart, because they don't want to wait for the traffic on Florence. We have enough problems with Potabom and Florence as it is. We don't need to add anything else to it.
My name's Bill Coffin. I live at 301 North Potabom. I think we're missing, I'm trying to find some things that our neighbors haven't brought up yet, but one thing I want you guys to think about is, this is our third round between going to the planning and zoning. This community that is sticking together united right here, that you're seeing coming up, there's more that want to speak, that are coming up. We're all concerned with our property value. They're going to benefit, I mean, our property value is going to decrease. But this is our third round, to the planning and zoning, then we had the community meeting, and now tonight, but we're staying united on this front, and I'm opposed to the project. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Jeff Van Heis, 12245 West Logan Lane. I'd like to speak in favor of the project. I think it's a good project. I think it's a needed project. And you've got local owners, developers, that are not only going to build it, but they're actually going to live on-site, and I think that's rare, so I just wanted to say that.
Thanks. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else?
Steve Wheeler, 190 North South Fork Drive. When I moved to Arizona three years ago, one of the main considerations from purchasing my house was the fact that the lot behind me was zoned in such a fashion, I wouldn't have to deal with apartments, tall structures, anything that's going to lose the privacy of my backyard and my pool. I moved from a rural area in Ohio, 40 acres, to a much smaller lot. So this offered me some privacy and some things for my family. I did send all of you folks here an email, and I appreciated the responses that I got back, but I would like to reread it, okay? So the property behind me was zoned in such a way, it was not supposed to be commercially developed. That should not change. That was the deciding factor in me purchasing my house. No commercial, no apartments. Privacy. No building behind me evade my privacy and use of my pool. Even under the revised plan, the buildings with terraces will be able to see over the wall into my backyard and pool area. Resale. I'm positive I'm going to suffer a loss of value on my house due to the nature of this project. Construction, dust, debris, and noise for the year plus it's going to take to build the complex. Increased traffic on an already congested road, and I would bring up, I'm not sure how they got the traffic counts on our road, because I drive it every morning and every night, and I never seen a counter across the road. We've already witnessed an increased traffic from the neighborhood off Dome and Pert that's being occupied to the south of us, okay? And then, we're talking about a, they started talking about a 55-plus community, now they're talking about 70 years plus? There's going to be an increase of emergency-style vehicles, and sirens are going to be coming to this project all hours of the night. It's going to disrupt the household. I believe that there's a need for this type of housing that they want to provide. I think it should be done in an area that's already zoned for such purposes, and there are many already available in Casa Grande, without doing any zoning changes. And I guess my only question would be, is if we have a zoning board that denies something like this, what's the purpose of having them, if somebody can come in and just override it?
Just figure you're waiting your turn, Chuck.
I sat on that side of the dais over 20 years ago, and I haven't bothered any of you since. So if I get over three minutes, you're going to have to give me a little leeway. That traffic study that you showed up on that screen is crazy and inaccurate. I don't know where it came from. But I can tell you what destroyed the accuracy of that is your staff has put a proposal before you, maybe it hasn't got to you yet, lowering the one-lane traffic on each side of Florence Boulevard at Five Points intersection, clear down to the Dairy Queen or almost to it. That is total idiocy. You can't do that. Maybe some of you haven't seen that project yet, but it's in the mill. One lane each way at Five Points on Florence Boulevard. That destroys this traffic study. One of my neighbors sat there at the corner of my yard and Pottebaum, right before this second meeting, for two hours, 605 cars. 605 cars in two hours. That figure is clear or crazy from this one. So traffic is an issue. But the issue was there before these people wanted to build this. Traffic was destroyed then. When the Circle K came in and they redesigned all of those ins and outs, there should be at least one accident a week. If there's not, we've been lucky. Someone, all of you ought to sit down there for a couple hours midday and see what a crazy mess that is. It's Keystone Cops, trying to go this way into the, into the prize market, into Circle K, out of Circle K, out of the car wash, at least eight buses a day, one way in the morning, one way in the afternoon, stop in the middle of Pottebaum, put the red sign out, flash the lights, and back up 50 cars. That could be eliminated. There's so many things that need to be talked about. There's plenty of infill places in Casa Grande that would love to have this facility. I would love to see that facility when I'm maybe 20 years older, but not now, I'm too young. This is not the place for it. I know the Oladokans are personal friends of mine. I feel bad I'm up here, but I'm fighting for my own private rights, and so was everyone here. So think of that.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing, but I think Council had some comments you wanted to make. Lisa?
Yeah, no, and I want to thank everyone for coming. I mean, you know, we welcome the community to come and give feedback, whether it's in writing, in person, so thank you to all of you that are here today. You know, it's such a difficult situation because we know our community's growing and there's so many needs as we continue to grow, and this is one of them, you know, housing for seniors. And, you know, we did the housing study, and we found that there is a demand for this. And, you know, the Oladokans have been longtime community members and have done so much in this community, and I understand, you know, that, you know, your thoughts are, you know, you have this private property and this is something that you know is needed here. My concern, though, is that, you know, this is a zoning case. It is already zoned urban ranch, and, you know, there's people that have, like many have come here today, expressed their concerns about buying property because of this zoning. And, you know, you have to think of yourself in that situation, too. And I, you know, if it was, you know, I mean, we look at that when we buy homes, especially if you're in an urban ranch setting, you know, with large lots, and those that aren't in the large lots, you know, they're going to look at that when they purchase homes. So I'm really struggling. I really appreciate, you know, the staff because you're listening to our, you know, concerns and what our strategies are moving forward, you know, when we talked about, you know, how, you know, what we need in the community, what we're going to approve moving forward, and we have. There was a project we just approved a month ago. You know, the Mary Teas, you know, down on Cottonwood, that is this adult, you know, senior living, and, you know, a beautiful development that's going to satisfy that need. So we, you know, we as a city and a community know this is something that we need. But, but those are my concerns. I really appreciate, you know, the research you've done. I think your team has done a great job, and, you know, the traffic team has done a great job, but I would really struggle moving forward with this with the concerns of all the neighbors. I mean, we need, it's important, just as if you were living there, you would want to have your voice heard, too, and it's important. And I think it's important to have the right development at the right time and in the right location. And unfortunately, I just think, I just don't think this is the right location for this particular project, and I hope you can find something here in Casa Grande because it's a beautiful project that is definitely needed here. So, but I really appreciate the community that has come out and expressed their concerns.
Donna?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, to the Olaf family and to John for representing them. I really appreciate the fact that you've tried to compromise and that you've gone back to the drawing board and you've listened to the neighbors. And that's what we're all about as a community. We need to listen to one another, and you've done that, and I thank you for that. Some of the things that I heard tonight, of course, was the planning and zoning has already denied this. This is the third go-around. You've talked about the need for this type of housing. We all know we need it, it's just not in this location, is what you're telling us. Urban ranch is just that. And John mentioned something that gave South Fork as a hypothetical if they moved it into that area. What is not hypothetical here is the families that live here that have called this area home for decades. And I can't dismiss what you have said and the concerns that you have because we are talking urban ranch. And that's why you bought this area, and we need to respect the fact that you want to remain in your urban ranch area. So, thank you.
Matt?
Not going to belabor it again. Beautiful project. Ironically, a month or two ago, we had a neighborhood that would have loved to have a 55-plus apartment behind it, you know? It wasn't this one. And the people that live there, urban ranch and the heritage of Casa Grande, and that's why they live there, and they have a passion for living in that, in that way with the animals. I know people that live across the street, they have their animals there, there's a house across the street for sale for over a million dollars, beautiful horse property that's ready, and that's what people want in Casa Grande. But the expectation when people move there was that that was urban ranch. They didn't have the expectation it would be a business multifamily district. And these, the people that live there, especially I know Mayor Walton, he approved multifamily residential right there when he lived there. So there's multifamily in the area, it's not that, it's just not the right place at the right time, and you have to respect the people who have the urban ranch and move there knowing that they wanted the urban ranch lifestyle there. And so, you know, they have their own passions, too, for how they choose to live in that area, and they have a lot of traffic, too, because of there's more development going on in that area, and it is a through-street. So we have to listen to the people because that's who, that's who we represent here as we're sitting up here.
Mr. Lavender, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. I just have a couple. Looking at the land use and the maps, you could easily construe that the current urban land piece, the one piece that is the property in question, does fit if you did change the zoning because it fits with the other zoning that's around it. It is the only urban ranch that's right there. But I also understand that neighbors may have bought there understanding that it was urban ranch and it was going to stay such. But I also understand that landowners have rights as well, and so we have to remember that, too. So it's a difficult decision. I understand all of the, the passion that people have for their homes, and I get it. I have a home myself, and I have a lot of passion for my home. So I think that, you know, unfortunately, there's just a lot of angst on this project, and there's other, I don't think that, even though it went to two stories, which I think was a good move, and it was moved back 98 feet, so I'm not sure that it really will be looking in people's backyards, not anymore than somebody who has a two-story home next to you. And I know there are two-story homes in that neighborhood because I've driven the neighborhood. And so, you know, some of those issues I'm not sure I agree with, but they're, that's your concerns, and I hear you, I understand it. I think there's just some passion there that maybe, you know, would have been nice to have the opportunity. I understand the noise, traffic certainly, and anyway, that's just my two cents. So any other comments from staff or anybody? Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Thank you to the neighbors for the turnout and the comments that have been expressed. All along since being engaged on this project, the question has been, what can be done to make it a better project, and what can we make, what can be done to make it to transition to our neighbors, who we want to be good neighbors with? And I think this is the telltale example of doing that right. Doing our research with the traffic, modifying the plan with the building heights, with the setbacks, and staff's analysis, we urge you to agree with it, that this urban ranch is a holding classification for future projects, for a project that would work, not a three-story project. I think that was shown that that wouldn't work. But consider these residents to our south who have, who have their land rights and they enjoy their 10,000-acre, 10,000-acre lots, or 10,000 square foot lots. If that right was given to the Oladokans, it would be a worse condition for the neighbors. Homes, a two-story home would be 20 feet from the property line. There are existing two-story homes. I know a couple of the neighbors you mentioned tonight, they have two-story homes already that overlook the Oladoken property. That transition with a 100-foot setback is very significant and very important to consider. Property values, certainly a senior living facility is not a direct comparable to single-family homes, so from a real estate perspective, it's not a perfect comparison. The way that property values are elevated is by good projects here in our community that make our community a place that people want to live in, that want to stay in, want to come to, and that's what this project delivers. There's a dedication of seven feet that's proposed along Pottebaum. That's going to continue a sidewalk that currently, there's no sidewalk connection for the South Fork residents to get up to the north. That's a safety condition that's added and good for property values in the area. Eight homes currently on South Fork on that north end. The proposed design of these buildings, there's five units that would be facing to the south, and screening measures can be put in place for the elderly individuals who live on that second story. But there is, there is not a significant visual encumbrance from our property to the south. We would urge the council to continue, to consider whether there are other items which the development team can look at. And if it is your prerogative to continue this case, we would love to continue to work with you and with the neighbors to evaluate that and to see if there are changes that would make more sense to integrate this proposal into the community. And I did say I'd be available for any questions. I know there were, peacocks are what are currently held on this site, and that doesn't have to continue. I think that shows that it's currently being used with an urban ranch-type rural use that will need to comply with the town's codes with, in terms of structures, location, and those uses. I don't think there were any other questions that went unaddressed, so I'm available for any questions that we might have, and Paul as well would be happy to address any questions on the traffic.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
No questions, but I did want to make a statement. I can sense I'm about to become the least popular guy in the room. My opinion is a little different than my co-council members. I don't doubt that you don't want this project in your neighborhood, that has been very clear. But I do believe in property rights, and I think the owner of these, of this property does have the right to pursue something successful, something that they can live, work, produce, other than a vacant lot. And I get the impression that a lot of people want it to stay a vacant lot. And I've got a little bit of a problem with that. I hate telling a property owner that, no, that's dirt and that's the way it's going to stay. They've got a lot of limitations as far as certificates of assured water supply. They are within their rights to seek a zoning change and pursue a project. I feel to a large extent that part of my job is to stand up for those rights. I will say that this particular project, if I had to, had to list what are the ideal requirements for a multifamily housing, it would be age-restricted and a gated community. Personally, the developments that I've seen, I don't foresee a big traffic problem or a noise problem or problems with the tenants. What I'm envisioning is something that's very quiet and well-managed. I don't think it's going to be a problem. It also fits in to what we tend to look at in transitioning. You know, I don't know that we would, we would allow something like this to go in all by itself in a residential neighborhood, but at the same time, we've got multiple apartment complexes around in the area, and I, I mean, I hate to say it, I know it's not the popular thing to say right now, but I think it's ideal for this location unless all you want there is dirt. Because I don't see many options, if any. I think they're going to be stuck. We've looked at some other projects that I agreed with the residents that, yeah, we're going to have too much traffic, too much noise, too much height, all of that, and I think the developer has gone way out of their way to address those things, and I'm impressed by that. So granted, I don't live there, and I don't have to look at it or deal with it, but I don't think it would be nearly the problem that you think it's going to be.
Yeah, and there could be, if it's urban ranch, you could have horses behind you, you could have ostriches behind you, you can have chickens. I mean, the animal gamut could be fully extended on that acreage, which fortunately, for those who live behind it, it is not today, but it could be a lot worse than it is, especially a lot worse than this project. Okay. We'll close the public hearing, so I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Could I just make one comment? There is an apartment house right across the street from me, next to their lot.
Right.
And that was deceitful when that guy from Ohio came in here, and I was on the council, I'm responsible. He said he would sign in blood that he would never make that Section 8 housing. The ink wasn't even dry, they turned it into Section 8. There've been two high school girls killed over there. Now, I'm not accusing this new project of being turning into that, but 20 years from now, if the economy crashes again... now, if the economy crashes again, they might have to get forced to Section 8 there. Then we've got the same problem all over again. That might have been what forced this guy to do it. So, if that project, if that apartment house wasn't there, maybe you guys wouldn't even consider it. We got tricked into that, and I don't want to get tricked into another one.
Thank you, John.
One other thing, I shouldn't even bring this up, that it was mentioned that they've got that vacant lot, they need to do something practical with it. This is the second time the Oladukens have owned that property. They bought it once several years ago, and the story I get, they sold it to some gal from Alaska, sunk a bunch of money in it, and now they've bought it back. They could've bought a piece of ground someplace else. They bought it back and got another burden that they'd already shed themselves of. So that's something else to consider, too.
L1, ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.451, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to planned area development on property generally located at 340 Potabom Avenue, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we deny ordinance number 1178.451.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call? This is on, a yes vote is to vote to deny, and a no vote would be no, and if there were enough votes, then it would be considered for approval. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Lavender.
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston.
No.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
No. All right, so it is denied on a 5-2. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is item L2, which is a public hearing considering ordinance number 1178.452. Oh, it's same one?
Oh, it was.
No, 452. It's different.
452.
Yeah. This is the McCartney Road. Yeah.
I said 452.
Yeah, I know. Last digit.
Yeah.
Didn't realize there was that many.
Okay. Now we can proceed.
Are you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this item in front of you is a zone change request to accommodate a proposed QuickTrip. Just a brief overview of the request is, the applicant is requesting to develop a QuickTrip convenience store and gas station on property presently zoned urban ranch located at the southeast corner of McCartney Road and Tucker. In March, this item was in front of Planning Commission, where they were asked to consider both a major site plan and to forward a recommendation on the zone change matter to council. And this is a snippet of their site plan, so you could see what's to occur on this proposed development. It's a 5.76-acre site, and it sits just catty-corner to the Circle K. It's at the northwest corner of McCartney and Tucker. They're proposing a 7,300-square-foot convenience store identified in yellow on the screen with a 7,200-square-foot fuel canopy between the convenience store and Tucker Road. I do want to point out that the fuel canopy is normally oriented between the primary road and the building. And so this is a little bit unique in that, from the street view of McCartney, you primarily see the, the building, and the fuel canopy has a very similar setback. They are proposing a 4,200-square-foot canopy for diesel trucks. It could also accommodate motorhomes, box trucks, et cetera, and that's what's identified in orange that sits behind the building to the south. The heights proposed within this zone are 20 feet for the building itself and 24 feet for the canopies, with 69 parking spaces, however, 49 are required. One of the things about this site is that, should it be approved and when it goes to develop, there would be the extension of Tucker Road south of McCartney. Currently Tucker stops on the north side of McCartney. With this project, it would be extended to the south end of the development. There would also be an extension of, of right-of-way or dedication of right-of-way for a new road going east to west along the southern boundary of the property. There would also be dedication for McCartney, some additional right-of-way dedication with some right-of-way improvements along McCartney, as well as right-of-way improvements for Tucker. The new road to the south wouldn't be improved at this time, however, it would be dedicated. The reason why there aren't improvements proposed on that east-west road to the south is that the site does not put any sort of traffic onto that road. There's no drive access, however, it does open up the opportunity for properties that develop to the south and to the east of it. As I mentioned, this item was in front of Planning Commission in March, and at that time, they forwarded a recommendation on a vote of 5 to 2 to City Council to approve the zone change from urban ranch to the QuickTrip P80. And then at that same meeting, they approved the site plan on a vote of 4 to 3, subject to the following, that City Council's, City Council would need to approve this P80, and that the construction of a traffic signal at Tucker and McCartney would be required prior to the issuance of the CVO, and also prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall dedicate the public rights of way for McCartney, Tucker, and the east-west road to the south of the property. There was a lot of discussion at that meeting pertaining to traffic. There was some uncertainty with regard to whether the TIA was adequate, and so that was also a condition of approval. However, since that meeting, both ADOT and the city traffic engineer has approved the TIA, and they have accepted its recommendations and changes. And what the requirements of the TIA are will be discussed in an upcoming slide. However, there are a number of recommended improvements that will have to be implemented if this project goes forward.
When you say TIA, that's the traffic interchange at I-10?
Traffic impact analysis.
Okay, okay.
I always, I apologize, because that's actually a pet peeve when people talk abbreviations, and then I find myself doing it all the time.
I'm an anti, I'm an anti, one of those guys.
Yeah. But then, but then if I say every word that's abbreviated, we're going to be here.
Be here all night.
For quite some reason. I might even do some shorthand here coming up. When reviewing zone changes, there is a list of criteria that our city code spells out that the staff report assesses in great detail. However, I want to focus on just the three highlighted items, because I feel they're the most important to this request, and they speak to a lot of the concerns that we have received as part of the review. So the first criteria that I want to talk about is conformance with the city's general plan. So this site sits within the general plan land use category known as commerce and business. It's that area that's in blue. And when looking at the general plan and what that commerce and business category entails, it lists that it's areas that are designed to promote uses that can benefit from Casa Grande's strategic location at the intersection of major interstates with high visibility to traffic between Phoenix, Tucson, and California. This site sits closer than a quarter mile from the I-10 McCartney interchange, and that's primarily why all of this area between Tucker and I-10 was designated as commerce and business, because it was seen as an area that would see high traffic, high traffic volume, because there is an interchange, and it does flank I-10. It does continue on to say, properties designated as commerce and business are located along interstates, parkways, and specific areas along major arterial roadways where auto-oriented uses are dominant. McCartney Road is a principal arterial. Right now, it's not improved to its full principal arterial status. However, as sites develop along McCartney, and there's additional right-of-way dedication and improvements, coupled with our plans to improve McCartney, that, that principal arterial road status will be achieved.
Isn't it true that, actually, that's part of our plan, is to improve it all the way from Penal to I-10?
Correct.
And that's, that bond has been approved, correct?
Yes.
So, next two years, that should be completed?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, another aspect that I want to point out is, the commerce and business category represents a strategic effort to place auto-oriented uses in appropriate environments. And you know, that's, that's really important to talk about, because what you'll notice on this general plan map excerpt is that, although this does sit within the commerce and business area, it is next to the neighborhoods category, which is that area in yellow. Neighborhoods is primarily to accommodate single-family residential development. And so there is somewhat of a crossroads there, where you have that area where the commerce and business land use meets the neighborhoods' land use, and finding out ways for there to be compatibility where you have that close transition. Real quick, I just want to point out that on a grander scheme, commerce and business designation tends to flank I-10, because it is designed to provide for highway commercial uses. But then again, shortly after you clear that commerce and business area, you don't, you do go into that neighborhoods' land use area. Primarily, the idea is that there could be highway commercial-related uses that are drawn to that area because of the visibility from I-10 and from interchanges, but a lot of that traffic gets off and then back onto the interstate. So it's really not intended to create a permeation of traffic beyond that commerce and business area. As many of you may travel up to Phoenix and need to get off and get gas, you get on and off the highway, you're not necessarily driving on into the respective city. A list of appropriate land uses within the commerce and business designation is commercial specifically, and this specific fuel station is a commercial use. However, also within the neighborhoods category, just catty-corner here, is Circle K, which is within the neighborhoods' land use. Within the neighborhoods category, the appropriate land uses are more residential in nature. However, within neighborhoods, it allows neighborhood-scale commercial. So the fact that the proposed QT does propose a larger footprint and does offer diesel-fueling to the south of the building, it's probably that distinction of why we, you're not going to see that type of use within the neighborhoods category, but within the commerce and business category, it's considered more appropriate, of course, with Tucker being that dividing line sitting in between, with the commerce and business sitting between Tucker and I-10. Another general plan consideration is that it needs to speak with, to goals, policies, and applicable elements. So one of the goals of the general plan for commerce and business is to create visibility without compromising attractive streetscapes or community character, and an action step to achieve that is to cite auto-oriented businesses to appropriate locations along interstates and/or select arterial corridors. So, staff believes that this is achieved through the elements of the site plan. Of course, there will be a screen wall between the streets and the parking areas, landscape treatment between the streets and the parking areas. And as I mentioned on a, on a previous slide, this is kind of a unique orientation of where they're putting the fuel canopy, because it's not sitting in between McCartney Road and the building itself, so passersby will have their, their focus beyond the building itself, which is kind of a, a unique situation.
Different.
And then the additional canopy for the diesel-fueling sits to the south of the building, so that's further screened. Another general plan, or excuse me, another PAD review criteria, and PAD's planned area development, by the way, PAD's own district, is the relationship of plan elements to conditions both on and off the property. So when you look at a zoomed-out view, and where this site sits in relation to kind of a greater picture, McCartney Road offers a variety of different land uses, both to the south and north, both in terms of what's existing and what's already been developed. A lot of commercial entitlement existing to the north and south of McCartney between Tucker and I-10. And there is some urban ranch designated land to the west. However, some of that sits within neighborhoods, some of that sits within the commerce and business category. That urban ranch property will likely be developed for some type of commercial-related use in the future through a future zone change. And then also, the proposal to extend Tucker and to provide an east-west road to the south of the site, or east-west dedication to the south of the site, does help potentially channel future traffic through to McCartney near I-10, as there's other developable land to the west, south, and east that can benefit from that roadway dedication and improvements. And then regarding just overall elevations and how it generally blends in with similar architecture in the area, this is the proposed elevations for the QuickTrip building. It's masonry construction on all four sides. And then here's an elevation view of their, the fueling canopies. That top image, that's not the diesel-fueling, that's the passenger-fueling canopy. That's a typo. And then on the bottom is the diesel-fueling canopy that'll be to the rear of the building. With regard to the traffic and vehicular ingress and egress review criteria when considering planned area developments, there were a number of concerns expressed at the Planning Commission meeting. There were people who attended the meeting, and there was a lot of dialogue among the planning commissioners centered around traffic. And... And there, there was a TIA in question, Traffic Impact Analysis, that, that has since been accepted by Arizona Department of Transportation and the City Traffic Engineer. And I just want to walk through some of the improvements that the development of this project would entail to ensure that the roadways are maintained at an acceptable level of service. That's, that's essentially what a traffic impact analysis does, is it looks at the proposed trip generation of the project and how that impacts the roadway network that the proposed use would be reliant upon and what types of improvements would be necessary to ensure that that roadway network is maintained at an acceptable level. So one of the primary triggers is for a traffic signal at Tucker and McCartney. There was one that was very nearly warranted already. This development does push that lead over the edge and that would be accommodated by the development of this project. And then there would be two driveways proposed on to Tucker from the site, identified in those dash circles to the south. There would be a dedicated right turn lane going eastbound on McCartney to turn on to southbound Tucker. There would also be a dedicated right turn lane to turn into an additional driveway that's proposed on to McCartney. That proposed driveway that's along the east side of the site is shared with the property to the east. That property is closer to the interstate and has been designated for commercial and multifamily use. That development is primarily going to get its access from and to Tucker as well. But this shared access drive offers the ability for left turns in to that site and to benefit the QuickTrip as well and rights out. And I should mention, it's not on the screen, but one of the improvements as well is they would have to put in a dedicated left for Tucker going westbound on McCartney. So it would be, if you're, if you're coming off the interstate and you want to turn south on Tucker, there would be a dedicated turn lane constructed there as well. With regard to the public notification process, we met the notification requirements that is required by code. As I mentioned, at the planning commission meeting, there, there were a number of residents within the McCartney Center who had concerns. And between that planning commission meeting and the scheduling of this meeting, we've received 10 additional emails, mostly from residents within the McCartney Center neighborhood, and those have been distributed to you. And I believe many who are in the audience are from, are from the neighborhood and who have concerns who will have an opportunity to speak. I do want to point out that we also have the applicant in attendance who would like to make their own separate presentation. With regard to the recommendation, as I mentioned, in March, Planning Commission did move to forward to City Council a recommendation to approve the QuickTrip Planned Area Development rezone with the following condition, which is our standard condition regarding the right-of-way dedication for roads if the city needs the right-of-way sooner than when we would ordinarily receive it. There, there would be an agreement to dedicate that right-of-way. I do want to remind City Council that included within the RCA in terms of alternatives, staff is suggesting that among those alternatives, you could certainly approve the plan, you could deny the plan, or even consider the option of creating some sort of condition that removes diesel fuel dispensers specifically designed for semi-truck use as an option. And that concludes my presentation. I do want to point out that, just as an aside, I was really impressed that I was able to have this little fancy fly-in. And then I realized, well, this is a, an example of where there's a canopy between the building and the street. And so I tried to find images of other QuickTrips where, would look like the one proposed here, and I could not find it. There was one location in North Phoenix, and I'm trying to remember the intersection, and the QT people can probably tell me, but it was on the opposite corner and I just couldn't get it to align. So this will be a very unique development should this project ultimately be approved. And that, that concludes my spiel.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
James, is, is there anything in our ordinances and zoning restrictions that, that attempt to differentiate between a convenience store and what we would commonly know as a truck stop?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hettleston, yes, within our city code, there's a definition for truck stop. And it actually lists several criteria. You have to have more than three fuel dispensers for diesel. You have to have truck washing. You have to have, well, and I stand corrected, you don't have to have these things. It lists, these are four things that would make you a truck stop. And any one of those four would put you into that category. So one of the reasons why this is a planned area development zone is, as a planned area development zone, you can provide customized land uses. And in this case, they're not proposing within their PAD those elements that you'd find in the city code like truck washing or onsite showers, et cetera. But they are happening to propose up to, as, as per their conditionally-approved site plan, a six-bay diesel fueling canopy, which would have seven fuel dispensers to accommodate diesel trucks.
Okay, so we're kind of in between a convenience store and a truck stop?
Right. Well, that's, you know, the way that I would see it is...
Please be quiet.
The way that I see it is that it, it is designed as a QuickTrip convenience store. It has that entitlement within the PAD, but it also has the ability for them to construct that fuel canopy to the south of the building to accommodate seven diesel fuel dispensers.
Okay, even under the PAD, if it was classified as a truck stop, would it still be allowed in the PAD?
Well, yes, because if, if it's approved by council, the PAD is, like I say, is a customizable zone district. So whatever uses and development standards that is presented by the applicant within that guide and agreed to by the city, it can go forward. The other element is, is it would have to be compatible with the general plan land use designation. And in this case, as a commerce and business land use, and given that the PAD is very specific with regard to what uses are allowed and what are not, is, is what's on the table this evening for consideration.
Okay. I could throw a grenade in the room, but I'm going to go ahead and get the ball rolling. So is, is it conceivable that a developer would have a motive to say, I'm building a convenience store, but I want to be careful that I don't add too many amenities because I don't want to be called a truck stop? That's my concern, is that maybe that's what is going on. I, I can see where people would be excited to get a QT convenience store, and they would be mad as can be if it was a truck stop coming in. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to walk my way through that of what qualifies it as this and that, what the advantages, disadvantages are. But my, my questions are and will remain focused on that. And I, I don't know if I'm asking you a question right now. I don't, I don't think so.
Well, and like sometimes I am not the best at answering them because I, I tend to look at all different angles. But I, I would suggest that the applicant is here who can
Yeah.
describe what, how, you know, other QuickTrips throughout the nation that has this concept, and it, it might better address your concerns and questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could you build a truck stop in a commerce and business zone?
Yes.
Okay. So is the applicant here? Please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name, for your record, is Brian Greathouse with the law firm Burch &amp; Cracchiolo. Also have some other team members here with me. From QuickTrip is Daniel Chambers. Our traffic engineer from Lohcahi is Jamie Blakeman. And my associate at my firm is Madison Leek. Want to thank Jim's presentation. I can kind of throw this aside now because all the slides that I had in mine are pretty similar to what Jim had in his and the notes I was taking in the last case. A lot of those notes were said by Jim. But I would like to emphasize a few things and try to differentiate what a traditional truck stop is and what's being proposed here. And also want to thank your Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of approval So a truck stop in its traditional sense, in the companies we know are Flying J, TA, Loves, they provide showers, their stores are usually a little larger, they have more merchandise, they have truck repair, you can change oil, you can get your truck washed, you can park there overnight. That's not what this QuickTrip is. QuickTrip has just seven fueling dispensers for people who might come off the I-10 in their semi-truck, their boxcar, their RV, some larger vehicle that can't fit under some of the canopies around town, and some that don't provide the type of diesel that run those, run those engines. So I know there is some truck components to it, but it's not a truck stop in the, in the typical, traditional sense of the word. It's just extra fueling for some people who need it. Do I have a slide here? Thank you. I want to emphasize a couple things. One is that it is commerce and business. Jim did an excellent job of describing what was intended in the general plan to go in this area. Not only a truck stop use could go here, but light industrial manufacturing-type uses and a whole litany of other commercial-type uses because they are close proximity to the freeway and it's a good location to have a lot of orient, auto-oriented uses. The, the traffic along McCartney Road will be improved because there's roadway improvements planned all the way from Penal down to the traffic interchange. And QuickTrip is going to fund a part of their piece of this. They'll be, they'll be putting in these improvements on McCartney Road, they'll be doing improvements on Tucker Road, improving the intersection. And what this will create for trucks that come off or other vehicles that might come off the freeway is a way to come off the TI, Traffic Interchange, Mayor.
I got that one.
Go west, you see the green arrows, that's where we anticipate our customers, QT's customers, turning left at the light. That, that entrance at the southwest corner is, is for larger trucks. They can pull into the site, they can fuel, they can go and get a fountain drink if they want, they can jump back in their vehicle, and they can take the red arrows out to either northbound I-10 or southbound I-10. As you all know, I-10 is one of the most important trucking corridors in the United States. And so there, there should be amenities and fueling options for people to pull off, especially in a business and commerce area, to, to get what they need and head on their way. We don't believe trucks are going to go west on McCartney unless they were already going west on McCartney to deliver to a grocery store or, or somewhere they were on their, on their way anyway. We call those pass-by trips. And typically with gas stations, we see about 75% of the trips that come in and out of a gas station are already on the roadway. So there's not an entirely new amount of trips generated. And that's all. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. We have a whole team, traffic engineers. Daniel can talk to you about QuickTrip operations, and we'd love to hear from the neighbors and answer, answer their questions later as they come up.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions, applicant?
I, I have, I would like to see some of the traffic stuff, we might get to that later. But by the rear fueling, proposed rear fueling, there's parking spaces, that's for semis?
It's for a variety of different types of vehicles. Some can accommodate a semi-truck, some would be a smaller box truck or an RV.
There's like 15 parking places back there. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
My name is Daniel Chambers. I work for QuickTrip. So hearing that and going through Jim's criteria and stuff as kind of a demonstration of good faith that QuickTrip is not considered as a truck stop, this is not intended to be that, we'd be willing to reduce or eliminate some of those truck parks back there if you guys would, can, would be willing to consider that as something that we would be willing to do to show that we're not trying to build a truck stop here. We're trying to intend to capture local truck traffic that is here, get some people to come off of I-10 and be able to get back on I-10. But based on your concern there, council member, we'd be willing to.
I, I mean, I'm just thinking that might, unless you have someone saying, hey, you can't sleep here, you know, guy stops there for three hours, four hours. I mean, it's a convenient place, you know?
Sure.
But, and, and I agree, I mean, if this was a Flying J or a TA or, you know, what your nice facilities, but not, definitely not, if it was one of those, it'd be out of the question, for sure.
Yeah, so we're definitely willing to...
I'm interested to hear what, what else everyone has to say, so.
Yeah.
But that was one of my big concerns looking at this is like, it looks like there's parking for trucks back there, so that's, you know, that's a concern that I'm hearing from people.
Yeah, we did have some room there, so when we do have the room, that we will show those. But once again, we're willing to, to work with you guys to remove those if that is a concern for you guys and also to demonstrate that we are not a truck stop. And then we also willing to put no overnight parking signs, and that's something that we've also worked with the adjacent property owner on, who is our seller, to put some signs up there too that are enforceable, so you guys can help enforce it if there is any overnight parking, because that's not what we want.
Bob?
Yeah, is this a, a new model for QuickTrip? And, and I will tell you, I love your stores. I, I stop at them all the time when we're traveling, but I don't know that I've ever seen one of these hybrids.
Yeah, so it is something that is different and is new as Jim mentioned, that we have the canopy to the side to just try to change the look of it a little bit so you don't look at the canopy. It's not as intrusive, you look at the building, it's an all-brick building. We do have some of these, but not as many really here in Arizona. We have some others out of state that we've done.
Okay, and I've, I've, I've stopped at them in an RV and been able to fuel up. I mean, it hasn't been a problem, but
Correct.
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this idea of, of tiptoeing over into the trucking world, so.
No, that's, that's why we're here and that's why we're willing to work, work with you guys. If that's, that's a concern that you guys have, I think that's something that we can talk about. As I mentioned, we're willing to remove some of the parking spaces and, and if you would even consider removing one or two of the diesel bays if that would make you feel more comfortable with it. We're not trying to pull one over, we're not trying to sneak one by. We've been working with city staff for over a year, I think about 13 months or so, about, approximately on this project. So we're, we're here, we're very committed, we're very vested, we want to build this and be part of the community.
I wish you were putting in EV charging stations instead, everybody would be excited about that.
Well, we're always looking at that, and that is, we have a whole group that's just dedicated to alternative fuels and looking at different solutions and what could possibly go there and then when at the right time... And then when the right time is right, that'll be something that will absolutely roll out when the time is right.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the public first.
Okay. All right. Um, well, thank you. All right, I'll open the public hearing at this time. I do have one card, speaker card here, so Shannon, you want to go first since you filled out a card? And give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Ward. I live at 1316 East Spencer Street. I would like to thank the mayor and the council members for the opportunity to register my objection to the proposed location of the QT truck stop. And it is a truck stop. I know that there has been a lot of commentary and discussion about the cri, to obfuscate and water down the idea of this being a truck stop, but let's be clear, it is. The gentleman over there said that there are about four criteria that, that can be used to classify it as a truck stop, but only one of those criteria needs to be met to call it a truck stop. And that one criteria that this location meets is that it has to have four or more diesel pumps. This one is going to have seven diesel pumps. Okay? And what I have to say to that is that if you build it, they will come. If you build seven diesel pumps, we're going to have more semi trucks. If you build canopies that are high enough to accommodate those trucks, then those trucks are going to come. If you build even four or more diesel pumps, those semi trucks are going to come. And if you build less than four diesel pumps, then why do we need it? We already have plenty of gas stations in this town that are just off the freeway, like the residential Circle K that we have and the ones that are over there on Panal. So if we are not going to build a, a location that has four or more diesel pumps, then we don't need a truck stop in our town. Okay? Additionally, it is going to add additional non-local traffic to our town in a residential area. It's nothing but neighborhoods around that area. Additionally, if we add a traffic light that's 700 feet from the I-10, it's going to make getting off of the I-10 to come into our residential area that much more difficult. It's already backed up all the way, trying to get off there at the peak areas, trying to get on the freeway to get to work on time. When you're coming home, you're tired, you've been on that I-10 or whatever it is for an hour, an hour and a half, two hours, and if it's been an accident, four hours. And yet then you're going to have to wait on the I-10 to get on the exit ramp, wait for the exit ramp to get on the Mark McCartney, then wait at the light at Tucker, then wait at the light at Pert. That's, that's, it's too much. It's too much traffic. Additionally, the gentleman over there spoke quite a bit about the visual aspect of the location. What he failed to address was the noise issue that's going to accompany all of those semi trucks. They are loud. They've got the air braking or the hydraulic braking or whatever they call it. I'm not a mechanical person. On top of that, diesel engines are loud and they run constantly. They don't shut them off. Okay? And he talked about adding signs, no overnights. We already have trucks that park illegally along McCartney and they do so no matter what time of the year it is, but as soon as they shut down that rest area that's just a few miles from the Panal exit, we have even more trucks that are already parking illegally. Now that they have an excuse to get off of there, hey, why not? I don't want a semi parked down there in my, my, my neighborhood because they've done it. On top of that, um, there's going to be an additional environmental impact. I don't care how you build those gas tanks and you bury them under the dirt, they're going to leak. They might not leak tomorrow, five years from now, 10 years from now, but 20 years from now, guess what? They're going to be shutting it down, digging all that dirt up and replacing those tanks. We already have a Circle K over there, you know, that's quite possibly going to be poisoning that land, you know, the next 10 or 20 years. Additionally, that Circle K there, it is in the residential area and it benefits us, the people of this town. It's really great when you're on your way to work and you're like, oh my God, I forgot to get gas, so how am I going to get to work? Or when you're on your way home, it's very convenient for us, the people who live here. That's truck stop, it's not going to benefit us. It's going to benefit the people that come over here, jump off, get their gas, do whatever they're going to do, and then they get back on. It might benefit QT, but not us. Additionally, trucks, truck stops, where you have truck stops, you have an increase in activities related to prostitution, and I don't want that in my neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Next.
How you doing, uh, Mayor, council members? Uh, my name's Osborne Wilder. I'm a resident of Casa Grande. I've lived right off Tucker Road since 2005. So this impacts me and my family directly. I can tell you as far as the truck stop, like my, my neighbors here, I appreciate, I got a flyer that came out that let me know to come to this, but we do have a Circle K that's there that does support the residential area, but the QT, that truck stop, it's not going to help us at all. The traffic is horrible. It's hard right now just to make a, a left turn coming out of Tucker. And when I'm coming home, I gotta put my, my signal on like very early because I turned on Tucker and those vehicles are right up on the butt of my vehicle all the time. And I can just imagine what this extra traffic is going to do for the entire community. And by the way, I don't want to be a guinea pig. Hey, no disrespect to QT. I go to QT all the time, but y'all talking about they have something like this, some hybrid or whatever. We don't want to be a guinea pig for something like this in our neighborhood. Why do we want to figure out if it's going to work or not? You know? And as far as the, uh, the diesel, like, like, uh, my neighbor said, it, it can bring crime straight up. You know, you have the lot lizards, you have prostitution, you have all these things that could happen, not saying it will happen, but you got a truck stop. I've been all over the country all the time. I know what goes down out there. And you got one truck, we got, we got diesel pumps at almost all of these gas stations. I've driven U-Hauls up to them, got gas, no problems. Box trucks, what do you need? This is only for semis. No reason that we need that there. And nobody within the city of Casa Grande is going to benefit from this. This is for all the transients and for the pockets of QT. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Julie Stockless. I live at 1662 East Joel. Lovely presentation. Thank you, QT, and I must applaud you. My trade is PR and I've, I would have spun it just like that. That's what I do for a living. That's a PR game. It's a truck stop. That's all it is. And I'm sorry, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's a truck stop. You are bringing trucks into our neighborhood. We keep talking about how it's zoned. It's kitty corner from a residential area, one of the premier residential areas. You guys just voted down something because of urban ranch and nine people. You've got 500 homes. That's going to affect right across the street. And it's lovely that you're going to fix I-10. Are you going to expand the bridge over I-10 to four lanes? Because that's what you need if you put a truck stop there. If you have trucks coming up, making a left off of that onto McCartney, do you know what that does to traffic? Do you know that, what that does to the ramp? Do you know what that does to our neighborhood? And what these people have said before, truck stop doesn't benefit anybody here. It benefits QT. That's who it benefits, not us. And I would ask, my husband and I moved into this neighborhood and we took a chance on Casa Grande. We built a home here and we planned on living here. Right? And I'm telling you, you've got three main ways onto Casa Grande. You got Panal, you've got Cartney, and you got Florence. And I got to tell you, for the future of this town, nothing says you want to live here except exiting off a ramp and seeing a truck stop. That would be the thing that would sell me on the community. So it's up to you guys to decide what you want this community to be and you have the power to decide what that is. That's all I have.
Three minutes. Hello, my name is Alan Strauss. I live at 2880 North Taylor Lane in McCartney Center. All right? I think it's great to have a QT there. I think it's great to have gas on mobile pumps. I think it's a horrendous idea to have truck pumps. What you're doing and what you're inviting, QT's going to have these big signs, truck stop going eastbound on I-10, westbound on I-10, diesel fuel, food and gas. Come on down. Do you know how many trucks ride on I-10 during the course of the day? Thousands? East and west? Take 2% of that. Let's take 5,000 as a round figure. I'm sure it's low. That's 100 tractor trailers coming off the highway, going on a one lane road. Big deal, you're making a right hand turn lane. You're making a left hand turn lane. So what? So what? Doesn't mean nothing. Never mind all that, did you all think about the trucking traffic on Panal? The industry on down in Casa Grande, all the trucks that are servicing the retail stores and industry down there? Wait till they get wind, we have a travel center with diesel fuel right off the 10 on McCartney. You're going to have all these trucks making right turn turns on Panal, onto McCartney, and driving all the way down and lining up on McCartney to line up and get into this gas station. How about the bus for children going to schools? You have children on these buses? You want these trucks fighting with these buses? You must have four to five schools in a quarter mile radius of McCartney Road. You can have tractor trailers riding up and down McCartney Road all day. Forget about the night, but all day? That's egregious. Like I said, QT is great. I'll get gas there and I'll buy in the store, not diesel pumps. I want to read you something out of my phone. I'm just livid over this. Diesel exhaust. Workers who are exposed or people who are exposed to diesel exhaust face the risk of health effects ranging from irritation of the eyes, nose, headaches, nausea, and respiratory disease. Diesel exhaust adversely affects heart rate, viability, and blood pressure and so on, cancer. So what do you think is going to happen to all this diesel exhaust flying around? I'm ending up here, all right? Bear with me. Flying around McCartney Road in the residential area. You think all this exhaust is going to go puff into the atmosphere in five minutes? Especially with the heat and air that we have in Arizona? It's going to settle. It's just going to float. Be quiet.
Can you please, please wrap up your comments, please?
Okay. And it's going to settle all over the residential areas. I totally disagree and I hope that you disapprove of these diesel pumps. QT is great. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members. My name's Devin Ward. Live at 1316 East Spencer Street here in Casa Grande. Like many others, I mean, I, I enjoy the, the QT's that we have here. We have one down there at Florence and Camino Mercado. We have the one at Panal and Cottonwood. I go to those quite often. Uh, I think they're very convenient. This proposal is a completely different animal. The fact that there are going to be proposed seven diesel pumps, again, this is going to be a theme you're probably, probably going to be hearing more of, even eliminating one or two of those pumps, it's still, per city code, it is still considered a truck stop. And as we've heard before, if you look at truck stops, they're very transitory in, in nature. And there are, there's a preponderance for crime there, like it or not, there, there is. There is prostitution. There is also human trafficking right there on the I-10 corridor. And another thing too, the gentleman mentioned about having, you know, all these, these big rigs and things like that by buses. You also have to think, if we're looking at human trafficking so close to a number of schools, I mean, Casa Grande Union High School is what, a mile down the road? We have Valago, probably another mile after that. That's, that's a little, that, that makes me really, really nervous. I'm really worried about that. So thinking about this, I, I know that it, it looks like a wonderful design, but it is a truck stop. Even taking out one or two pumps, it is still going to be a truck stop. And those, I mean, truckers see that and it is just a moth to a flame. They just go right there. And again, because of the nature of the truck stops, very worried about the, the nature of crime. I do not want to see more crime in our city. So thank you, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Bill Clarkson and I am here on behalf of Mr. Puzes, who is the property owner to the east of the QT. Originally, Mr. Puzes, after the planning commission approved the project, Mr. Puzes did object to the project primarily because the TIA traffic impact analysis was not approved. And so that was contingent and so, and, and the other part was that the ingress on the shared access was not approved either. That was not in writing and we hadn't seen anything. Since then, the TIA has been approved by the, uh, the city, traffic, as well as ADOT. And there is an agreement that's proposed that I think both parties are in agreement with. So, um, he has withdrawn the, uh, he, he's now in, uh, in a, in approval of the project. There was one other issue. His property on the east side of the QT is on McCartney, fronts McCartney, is zone commercial and multifamily, but the Mc, the commercial, um, is, what we're getting from the city is that the access to the west would be off of Tucker. And so Tucker is being dedicated on the south side of the QT, but it is not being improved per, part of this plan. So, uh, we're just not certain how we're going to get out of the property to the west until that road is improved unless we have access, but that can be addressed, I guess, at a later time. But it is kicking the issue of westerly access of the McCartney Commons Project kind of down the road a little bit, so. Anyway, but other, other than that, we're, uh, Mr. Puzes is in, um, in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Aiken. I live at 2937 North Pecan Avenue in Casa Grande. I am very much opposed to this project. So when it was first proposed in March, um, you guys were trying to pitch it as some like, oh, it's independent, like it's going to be for small suckers, like, that's, that's a big lie because the only way that you guys are going to make money on this is by expanding. And you say you're going to, oh, maybe like reduce the number of fuel pumps that you have for diesel. Well, who's to say you're not going to expand it later on? You know, there's nothing that's going to keep you guys from screwing us over, for lack of a better term. And, uh, and quite frankly, I was really insulted by the fact that you brought up the fact that you have cheese sandwiches that are delicious as some kind of selling point for this. You think we want to have a truck stop in our neighborhood for some cheese sandwiches that are probably, you know, I don't, I don't even know. But it's, it's ridiculous. So having this next to families, next to how, like our community, is just a horrible, horrible idea. This is, it's not, it's, truck stops, they, as other people have mentioned before, they bring prostitution, they bring drugs, vagrants, transients, human trafficking, all of the above. And there's no way that you can say, oh, that's not going to happen here. Of course it does. It happens everywhere. So, you know, having that is, is going to be awful. Like we, there are children, like families right there. And having that element is just going to, it's, it's just going to be just horrible. And, you know, we've already heard about effects of pollution. So you've got diesel fumes and then you've got any kids that have asthma, elderly or people like vulnerable populations that already have preexisting conditions, they're going to be at risk for further respiratory illness. You've got issues with kids riding around on their bikes, uh, on their ATVs and like dirt bikes and stuff all around in the area, and you've got a bunch of semi trucks cruising around. They might not be able to see them and stop in time. You know, if you've got all of these extra trucks coming in and out, um, let's see. The light and illumination from the gas station is going to be super bright and obnoxious for people. Um, you know, you If you've had issues with kids riding around on their bikes, on their ATVs and like dirt bikes and stuff all around in the area, and you've got a bunch of semi-trucks cruising around, they might not be able to see them and stop in time. You know, if you've got all of these extra trucks coming in and out. Let's see. The light and illumination from the gas station is going to be super bright and obnoxious for people. You know, you guys heard about in the, the previous pitch for the, that other development, that, you know, what are they going to have to close their blinds all the time so that they're not blinded by all of these lights? Let's see. Yeah, I think that pretty much hits everything I was going to talk about. So, yeah, I'm very much opposed. Please, please, like, help us. This is our home. Don't, don't let them do this to our home.
I have a picture on my phone. QT, the travel center, to everyone view. Do you guys want to see it? We're happy to show it to you. You want to verify it on my phone?
No, that's all right. Well, we, we have a lot more people to speak, so let's, let's let everybody speak.
Hi, mayor and council. My name is Denise Wilder. I live at 1797 East Chaparral Drive. My husband spoke earlier. We moved in in November 2005. We've been there through tunnel and done. And to see the development get finished as of 2023 has been a blessing. With the truck stop that they want to put, this is going to decrease our value. We waited from 2005 to have our property value to go up. And it's been a wonderful thing. Our development is finished. So we have kids that play. My daughter has graduated. She's 21. So, to see more kids come into the development and run and play, it's been a joy. So with the convenience store coming, or truck stop, no, corrections, truck stop, because he's quoted, Mr. Chambers said, he would put up signs for no one to park. But the trucks are parking on the off-ramp. On, I have left to go to work in the morning, or just to leave to go to Phoenix. There are two trucks parked behind each other. Or if I'm heading to the mall, there are two trucks parked on the off-ramp to get some sleep. So, having the seven diesel spots is a no-go for me. Please deny this. I would like to see that our development keeps increasing in property value. As a long-time resident, as one of the first ones to move into this development in 2005, I see more growth, but not with having a truck stop by us. I see like little eateries so families can walk out with their kids and enjoy stuff. But not having a truck stop near us at all. And also feel like, if you approve this, in the future, they will come back and ask, can they do this? Add more to it. There will be a motel. There will be more trucks, like a car wash or something for them. So I, I feel like to get them in now, this is just an easy way for them to get in and then come back and ask for an appeal to, uh, to expand, to a full-fledged truck stop. Thank you.
Anyone, oh.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, my name's Nancy Wood, 513 East Vekel Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. I love QT. I think they, I've been stopping at their gas stations throughout, uh, the areas where they have them. And, uh, really appreciate their services and the kind of, uh, facilities that they keep up and everything like that. I will say, though, that I do have a concern about the semi-tra, traffic that would come into a QT in this kind of, uh, setup. Partly because Casa Grande, we already have a lot of really transportation issues with our roads. They are just really not adequate for the traffic that is being brought in by all the development that we have. I drive McCartney. I drive Pinell and all the different interstate exchanges that we have. And my concern is with the semi-traffic, trying to navigate these roads, especially going over the overpasses. So this is more really about I-10, which is ADOT's jurisdiction. It's not the city of Casa Grande. So these overpasses are extremely old. They're narrow. They're dangerous. They're not really set up for that kind of heavy traffic that semis create. It, you know, I've gone over with Sunland Gin area where the overpasses at I-10. They, they tear up the roads. They're a mess. The, the potholes, the traffic, the exhaust. I appreciate QT. You know, I, I think it would be great to have, you know, a station there. But maybe instead of using semis, put in EV stuff. That's one of the things that, that is up and coming with maybe even the semis. Doing electric semis instead of diesel. So, there's things to think about in the future, but I hope that, um, our city is just not at the curve for handling that kind of semi-traffic on those, on those overpasses especially. And it will change the, the way the truckers drive through the city, possibly. So it's one of the things to consider. But I do love QT. And I would use the station if they put it there, but the trucking traffic is concerning. Thank you.
My name's Angie McKinley. I live at 1632 East Walter Drive in McCartney Center. I am for this QT because I own an RV that uses diesel, and I would like a better option to be able to get in and out with my RV to get fuel. Circle K has more than four diesel pumps across the street. It is very difficult to turn left out of Circle K with the proposed stoplight. It would make it easier for me to get in and out of that area. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Blaker. I'm at 1789 East Chaparral. Looking at the pretty little picture with the blue and the yellow. Very nicely divided, but it is literally, literally yards from my backyard where this truck stop that I oppose is being proposed. We have eight-foot cinder block walls blocking us from the neighbors and from the, um, Circle K gas station. We don't get a lot of air movement. We do get a lot of smells from the gas station. And I think with the toxins and the carcinogens that will be intensified with another truck stop right there, that will help to pollute our backyards. And I could just dump a bunch of rock into the backyard, close my windows, never go outside. It's not really what I want to do. Um, excuse me, I don't like public speaking. I kind of want to bring a personal note to this. Sometimes I feel like all these arguments are a little bit abstract. If you're not in the area, you don't really care. My daughter has a set of twins, about two and a half, going on three years old. We already know that they're going to be paraplegics. They will never walk. My backyard is a little refuge for them. I do respite care for my daughter. She's with them 24/7. I like to give her a break. I want to be able to take those little boys out in the backyard until they can no longer crawl around. I want them to get as much exercise and physical therapy as possible, and that is their little refuge. We don't need more pollution, more toxins in our neighborhood. That is a residential neighborhood. Even though there's a line on the map, it is right there in our backyard. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? The applicant. Want to say any last words?
Thank you. As I mentioned before, we're willing to work with you guys on, um, the reducing the, the diesel base so it's not considered a truck stop, removing the parking in the back. There's been a lot of stuff brought up about noise. Currently, it's a vacant lot. There is a, currently already a gas station in between what we're proposing in the neighborhood. There's going to be a full street, plus there's additional businesses also in between us, too. We picked this location based on the, um, getting the access off of McCartney, working with ADOT in the city. So this is as far, um, east as we could, we could get it to have the access to be able to make it safe to operate. I appreciate everyone's concern, and we can talk about specifically any environmental or, um, additional concerns they have. And I also want to point out that Quick Ship does not do any fleet accounts. And that's what the over-the-road truckers use. They use a fleet account. They pre-plan their trips. So that's, that's not what this is intended for. Thank you.
Any comments, Lisa?
Well, thank you. I know it's been a long evening, but this is so important. So again, thank you all for coming, just like we think that the people that were here earlier. It's important for us to hear. You know, I was out in that neighborhood this weekend and, and talked to several people, and there might be a couple in here that I talked to, and I understand your concerns. You know, it's just, it's a little frustrating because, well, first of all, QT, I really appreciate you coming to Casa Grande and, you know, building your facilities here, like everyone here in the room has talked about. You have great facilities. They're clean. You know, they're, um, you know, just, I mean, we all enjoy, you know, um, coming to your stores. And, but I, I guess I get frustrated because we forget the importance of truckers and the transportation industry. You know, and we, you would think we would remember during COVID, you know, when, you know, things couldn't get to us, you know, soon enough. And so, um, I, I understand, and so I, it, it's frustrating because I understand, I'm not in the industry and never have been, but it's a critical industry for our economy and for us, you know, for, for what we do in our community to get products and everything in and out. We have, you know, manufacturing facilities in this community that are taking things in and out. So it's, it's so important. So, um, and, and there's a lot of stereotypes, and I understand. I, I haven't done, you know, tons of research on what truck stops bring. Of course, you hear things. So, um, but I just hope we just respect, you know, a little bit more on, on truckers and people that, that do that for a living and what they bring to communities and the economy. So back to this project. You know, listening to the community members and spending time on McCartney and seeing the traffic and the congestion and, you know, where, where it is, you know, right off of the freeway really concerns me. And I understand their point. I have no problem with the convenience store. I think the people that I've talked to in that neighborhood say that they don't mind the convenience store, but bringing that aspect to that area right there is just not, i- it's just not the right place. Again, right place, right project, right time. And I just don't think that part of it, that you, you know, that you're, you're considering or proposing is, is the right area. I just, you know, I, I, again, appreciate, you know, the, the feedback. I appreciate you guys looking at Casa Grande. But I worry, I think it was Mr. Strauss, is it Strauss? Brought up a good point, and it was something that I was thinking about. We have so much, and, and you guys may not know this, but we have so much traffic on Pinell, you know, with trucks. And we're concerned about that traffic and finding alternative routes. I'm concerned that this might be an alternative route where people will know there's a fueling station there, come in, go across McCartney, go down Pinell, you know, and go, you know, go, go into, um, you know, more traffic on, on Pinell. And then also for people that are camping out. Like you said, Matt, you're concerned with the, with the parking spaces, you know, concerns me. So there's, um, there's just some concerns with that. I, I really hope you would consider still bringing your, um, you know, store and your gas station. And I think it, it's definitely needed for that area as we continue to grow. But, um, I'm, I'm very concerned about that other piece, and I would have a really hard time moving forward. Not only with the, of course, the, the community input is really important, but just, um, the, just the area. Commerce, I know the land use is commerce and business, and it's going to bring, you know, you said auto-related, um,
You can put a truck stop there.
You can put it, but with, with everything else around there, I just don't think it's the right place. But, um, so, that, that's my, you know, input, but I would have a really tough time voting for that piece of it. But I am in favor of the QT itself.
Um, I would say, um, I'm, I'm big on the infrastructure that we don't have in place on McCartney and I-10. If you ever tried leaving the Promenade and going down I-10, and you're heading towards Phoenix, and you get off at McCartney, and you try to make a left-hand turn, it is a difficult turn, and you are going to have to wait for a minute. So for a diesel, and also, it's only, it's just two lanes up there. And also for a diesel to make that turn, that's going to be difficult as well. It's going to cause up some traffic jams, and even getting off, um, on the other side. And I did, um, I appreciate QT and the structure, what you're trying to do with it, like the design and everything like that. However, I just think that there's going to be a lot of other issues that's going to come along with those trucks coming in that area. I was at QT twice today, so. I left, I left QT, so, but anyways, I would have a problem because the infrastructure is not in place. And I believe I voted, and I said this before, I believe we were talking about another project, once we get to Corton and, and building out I-10 and things like that. Until that's completed, and that overpass is completed, then I would not be in the favor of this being put there.
Donna?
Just a couple of quick things. I know it's late. Our consensus is everybody loves QT. There's no question about that. And I do not feel, I want to make this clear, I do not feel that QT is trying to be deceitful in their plans to get around anything. They probably are the epitome of quality customer service of any convenience store that I've ever been at. So I, I really feel that they are trying to be earnest in what they're doing. I am concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the parking that Matt had mentioned. I traveled this road for 21 years, back and forth to Florence, and I can tell you, I'm not even sure at this point a light will help in that area because of the congestion and the traffic, the traffic flow. I, I am in favor of QT being there. I'm, I'm in favor of that all the way. But having this diesel fuel issue, I'm just not sold on that. I just can't, I can't agree to that.
Matt, anything else?
You know, I would like to see, they seem like they're good to work with, and I agree that they're not trying to be deceitful, but, you know, like, the, the parking spots concern me. But I was wondering if we could see some different plan, you know? Like you said, you'd be willing to work, and I don't know if the people would be acceptable to you guys working with them, because usually that's how we do it. You know, again, I'm not going to be labored. I go to QT all the time. Best, you know, best thing. Would it work without the diesel pumps for you guys?
Um, we need to have some, because like I said, we're trying to get the, target the, the local, the, the box trucks, some of the RVs and some of that stuff. So that's why we're absolutely willing to, to limit that number if that, that's the concern, to get rid of the truck parking. It was also mentioned about starting here and then expanding. That's something that we can't do because everything that we have proposed here is locked into the PAD. So we just can't change it in the future. It has to come back here. So we're, we're very willing to work with you guys on that to limit those numbers, if those are some concerns, as well as the parking, because it is a, a critical P component that, of, and customers that we're trying to serve.
Well, oh, Bob, go ahead.
I got more to say. So, I think the history of Casa Grande, we have not been in the truck stop business. And, and I, I really am worried about taking that little step, even though it's only this big. We've always been happy with Eloy hitting the truck stop business. They, they're set up for it. They've got plenty of room to build more. I, I don't have any problem with leaving it that way. A couple of other things. This idea of, uh, of having some of the amenities of a truck stop, but not all of them, and sticking with that, I, I don't know that anybody can do that. I mean, we, we noticed that your building is turned the wrong way. I have, I have to believe that's so you can do business with the trucks, so people can come in from either direction. I, I would be thrilled if all we had was our standard QT, like we have on the west side, like we have on the east side. I think that would be perfect. And I, I wanted to chime in on one more thing. My history is law enforcement. And truck stops are a particular challenge to law enforcement. I've worked special details over at the truck stops over in Eloy, and there is, all the things these people have brought up. things these people have brought up, there is prostitution, there is drug trafficking, there is human trafficking. That's not a slam on truckers or the truck stop business, but it's just a fact. I mean, it's transient, and they've got the means and the location to conduct that kind of business. And I've never seen a facility that was half convenience store and kind of sorta a truck stop, but I'm not willing to give it a shot. I don't think that's a, that's a good idea, so.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. All great comments. Want to thank the neighbors for all coming out and talking with us tonight. I would like to suggest, like Councilmember Herman was implying earlier, I believe, was that a continuance might make sense here so we can continue working with staff to see what less diesel fuel stations would look like on the site, and also maybe talk internally with the QT folks to see what options we have to potentially not do them. Daniel and I, we don't have the authorization tonight to say that we can get rid of all of them.
I'm going to chime in with a comment on that. All of the things that you specified that you want to be able to capture, the box trucks, the RVs and all that, I've seen all of those at Circle K. They have some diesel pumps. The thing that I don't see is an 18-wheeler pulling in there.
I'm not a gas expert, but the way I understand it is there's two different types of diesel. Some trucks take a diesel one and some take a diesel two. That's about the extent of my knowledge of it.
Right. If it's a commercial vehicle, it has to use a different diesel.
Right.
And they're different colors, actually.
That's, again, off-road, but. Might I suggest, too, is I know you have more of these across the nation, if we go this route, to try to see if it might, you know, because Circle K does have diesel pumps, and people seem to like the Circle K. But how are the other ones operating? What's their thing like, you know? What's that? You know, how do they, what's their crime rates? What's their, you know, because you do have, like he said, I'm sorry, can't remember your name, but.
Mr. Strauss.
Strauss. I looked some of these up on, just while we're sitting here on the computer, to see what they look like. And, I mean, they're kind of big, like trucks outs. You know, and that's the biggest concern we're getting. Now, another thing that would benefit, I mean, the light at Tucker would alleviate some of that traffic problem of people turning in, you know? And I, again, we didn't hear much about the traffic analysis tonight either, to see how those traffic patterns are. So I want to give everyone, you know, I've definitely heard what the people say, and they don't want it like this, so.
And I'd suggest maybe a continuance, because it doesn't sound like it's going to go through with the way it currently is being presented. I think QT is one of the best operators of convenience stores in the country. I've dealt with them professionally. They are one of the best companies I've ever dealt with. And, you know, I know that they are, they're an upstanding company. And so I'm sure that there's no malice intended here, and, you know, whether anyone will believe me or not, but I would suggest, too, that we work with our traffic and our streets, and hopefully, if the engineering is done on McCartney piece, that they can incorporate some of that engineering on that, on our street to help better explain what that interchange will look like, because we're in the middle of designing it right now. So we have the, the bond has been approved. That road will be a five-lane road in front of QT, you know, so what?
Plus turn lanes.
Plus turn lanes. So what does that, you know, what does that look like, and how does that incorporate into your, into your plans? So I would recommend we do a little more there with our traffic department. So I think that will help, and then maybe have a community meeting. Could do it here.
Happy to do so.
Okay. All right.
Happy to know about that?
Absolutely.
We'll let everybody know about it. So.
No.
No.
That's ADOT.
Yeah, no, it touches him.
No, it doesn't touch, doesn't touch I-10 and their on and off ramps. That's an ADOT.
That's not our property.
That's an ADOT program. Yes, they do know about it. They know about them. If we could, if we could improve that interchange, we'd have more there than a QT. So, all right, so you guys are okay with a continuance on this? Table it?
I would, Mayor, I would move to table the discussion on this until a future date. Is that good enough, Brett? Or?
Yes. Our code does say we can't table it for more than two meetings, so we'll need to come back no later than our July 1st meeting.
Is that soon enough for you guys, or long enough?
We could continue again.
We, we also have, our code does say that we can't table it for more than two meetings, but we can always work with the applicant if they need additional time.
Yeah, if you need additional time, we can.
But for us, we can't table it for more than two meetings.
Enough time for us to meet and them to meet with their people and the residents who live.
Yes, Mayor, and council members, that's what I was thinking. It's going to take some time to get our notices out.
Right.
Maybe we have the meeting here, maybe we have it at church nearby there, the community. So that's going to take a little bit of time. It's going to take some time to work with city staff on figuring out what the TI improvements will be, what the McCartney improvements will look like, and come back and with some visual exhibits. And I'd like to put those together before the neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
So that's going to be critical, so everyone understands. At the end of the day, lots of folks might not still want the QT with the diesel pumps, but I think the information, being informed and making the decision after you're informed is important.
Okay.
Well, and, you know, we have to take into consideration summer, too. You know, people are gone, and you just hate to have a meeting, you know, right in the middle of July or, you know, second week of July if it's our second meeting. I mean, I think the further we push it out, the better, too, for people that are going to be.
Just work with staff. Work with staff, and we'll figure it out.
So for now, the motion on the table is?
Is to table.
Table it.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to table the item number L-2.
1178.452.
Yeah. Coordinates number 1178.452. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jeff, are you still there? Did you fall asleep?
Oh.
Okay.
Poor Jeff.
All right.
Probably midnight there.
Yeah, it is.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, we do have another public hearing. This is item L-3. This is for our budget proposed tax levy, including truth and taxation requirements related to the primary tax rate.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. On May 6, the Council adopted the FY 2425 tentative budget in the amount of $369,867.68. As required by Arizona Revised Statutes Title 42, Article 3, the tentative budget was published twice in the local paper, and a public hearing on the budget and proposed primary property tax levy, truth and taxation, was scheduled for tonight's council meeting. Council will not be asked to vote on the actual levy of taxes or the approval of the budget tonight. Council will consider the approval of the final FY 2425 budget in a special meeting scheduled for June 17, 2024. In addition, council will consider approval of the first reading of the 2425 property tax levy at the regular council meeting on June 17, 2024. Tonight, Mayor and Council will be holding the public hearing on the city's FY 2425 proposed budget and primary property tax levy. After the public hearing, as required by Arizona Revised Statute 42-17107.4, the Council will be asked to adopt by roll call vote a resolution relating to the truth and taxation property tax levy to meet the requirements of the statute. As proposed and advertised, the primary property tax rate would remain the same as fiscal year 2024, .9643 per $100 of assessed value. The total primary property tax levy being proposed for 2425 is $5,878,352. The proposed primary property tax levy on a home valued at $100,000 will be $96.43, which is the same rate and tax for a home valued at $100,000 from the fiscal year 2024. Due to the anticipated increased assessed valuation, keeping this rate is expected to increase the total of primary property tax collected, exclusive of new construction, by $335,246. If the city maintains its current existing tax levy amount as opposed to the tax rate, the expected primary property tax on a home valued at $100,000 would have been $90.30. This represents an increase of $6.13 per home valued at $100,000 for a net percentage increase of 6.79%. Although the primary property tax rate is not being increased from last year, the total amount expected to be collected through the primary property tax due to anticipated property value increases exceeds what the city received last fiscal year. Thus, the city is required by Arizona Revised Statutes to take certain steps concerning the truth and taxation. Accordingly, the city published a truth and taxation hearing notice in the Casa Grande Dispatch on Tuesday, May 14, and Saturday, May 25. The city issued a truth and taxation press release on May 14, 2024 regarding the truth and taxation hearing, and posted the press release on the city's website. The proposed secondary property tax rate, which is set to ensure that the city has sufficient funds to make payments on the bonded indebtedness approved by voters, is .3790. The proposed secondary property tax rate for FY 2425 is a decrease of .0407 from fiscal year 2024. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Jeff, do you have any questions? Jeff, do you have any questions? Sorry. Talking to the box. Mr. Lavender?
Phone died.
I'm going to ask him if he has questions. I know it's a public hearing. All right. Jeff doesn't have any questions, so. I'll open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the fiscal year 202425 budget and proposed tax levy. Is there anybody in the public who would like to address this? All right, seeing no one jump up, then I will close the public hearing. And I'm going to call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5652. A resolution of the Council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, relating to truth and taxation for fiscal year 2024 through 2025.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve resolution number 5652 as presented.
Second.
We have motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for hanging on. I think we wore everybody down. So we'll end with our reports, and I'm going to start with you, Donna.
All right, quickly, busy times, swim lessons, registration, summer reading program. Danny is going to be exhausted in the next few weeks and his staff, so be kind to them. And I just want to thank the Arts and Culture Commission. They helped with the unveiling of a utility box at Purt and Cottonwood. So I tell anyone, go by there, do the QR code, and it actually will come alive online with the animals and stuff that are on that. Just hats off to Juan Reyes, who did that. It was beautiful. And that's it.
Matt, thank you all for staying tonight, and I'll let you go. That's it for me, actually.
No report.
Really quick, just congratulations to Mary Lou Rosales. We've done a lot with her for many years. She just retired after 43 years with Cara, and so she's been a great partner in the City of Casa Grande. So I wish her all the best. We had a celebration. Went to that, Councilmember McBride and I were both there, and we were happy to be there to celebrate Mary Lou. And then also, just a beautiful Memorial Day celebration. I don't know who was able to be there. The mayor was there, did a great job as the guest speaker, but it was wonderful to celebrate those who sacrificed their life in the military. So beautiful celebration.
That was nice.
That's it for me.
No report.
All right. I don't have any report either, so we'll call it an evening. Thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.